Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. To protect our constituents, city officials, and the city staff, and that the city reminds all who of those in attendance that physical distancing and face covering are required. I call to order this regular meeting of the City of Campbell City Council on this Tuesday, November 16th, 2021. This regular city council meeting is conducted in person and via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act and Assembly Bill 361, allowing a virtual meeting process for local jurisdictions under a declared state of emergency. The city council meeting is being live streamed on Channel 26, the city's website, and on YouTube. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bybee, present. Councilwoman Landry, present. Councilmember Lopez, here. Vice Mayor Resnickoff, here. Mayor Gibbons, here.
Thank you all. And at this time, I would like our guests to come forward to the podium to lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation.
Unundergod, invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. I am now going to ask our guests to introduce themselves.
My name is Tim Hegstrom. The three of us are here on behalf of the Campbell Ministerial Association. And just a quick introduction here, or?
Sure.
Yeah.
Just a quick introduction, yeah.
Okay.
My name is Reverend Daniel Salbundema, originally from the West African state of Sierra Leone. I'm the Associate Pastor of Campbell United Methodist Church, 1675 Winchester Boulevard, Campbell, California.
Good evening. My name is Ogion Kim Jung, Senior Pastor of Campbell United Methodist Church in your neighborhood. I work with Pastor Daniel. Originally, I came from South Korea, but here as a citizen of this beautiful country and the resident of Campbell, City of Campbell. I live here and work here and serve among the people, so it's glad to be here. We are here this evening in support of our mayor as she makes the proclamation for this week, United Against Hate Week. So we are very proud. She's part of our group, actually. Yeah, so we're here in support of her important action tonight. Should I? Okay, so I'm wearing this because I thought this would be one of the things that I can do tonight to show I am part of this, this important event. This is the mask that we gave out to our church members as we celebrated Pride Sunday last August. So I just brought some leftovers for you as my gift to you.
Thank you.
Judge, okay. I have more. There's only five if any of you would like more.
I have some more. Thank you. And although I did read this proclamation two weeks ago, this is in fact the United Against Hate Week. It began on Sunday, and those of us that could participated in the United Against Hate March in LaScatis on Sunday. So I will read. Whereas United Against Hate Week is a call for seven days of local civic action by people in every California community to stop the hate and implicit bias that are a dangerous threat to the safety and civility of our neighborhoods, towns, and cities. And whereas United Against Hate Week was created by civic leaders in direct response to the sharp rise and expressions of hate across our country in every California community. And this call to action empowers local residents to take action in their communities and alter the course of this growing intolerance. And whereas when local governments and residents work together against hate, mutual respect and civil discourse can be restored and all communities can embrace the strength of diversity and build inclusive and equitable communities for all. Whereas the residents of Campbell live in a multicultural community of people from many places across the country and across the globe and is committed to recognizing the dignity of all its residents and the diverse contributions of both immigrants and native-born. And whereas it shall be declared that all people should be treated with empathy, courtesy, respect, regardless of their racial background, their language they speak, their nation of origin, their religion they practice, their real or perceived sexual orientation, gender identity, age, or disability. And the City of Campbell will vigilantly oppose all hate-motivated behavior and all other forms of discrimination. And whereas the politics of division, isolation, and hate have no place in our community as we recognize that all people are deserving of assurance of the basic principles of equity and human rights. And whereas we pledge to take proactive steps to act with heart and courage to create a community in which the humanity and dignity of every person is nurtured and preserved, preventing the escalation of hate-motivated behavior and preserving basic civil rights for every citizen in our midst. And now therefore, I, Elizabeth Gibbons, Mayor of the City of Campbell, do hereby proclaim the week of November 4th through 21st as United Against Hate Week. So thank you all. And please, I will offer you this. This is a certificate of appreciation for being with us tonight to say the pledge and as members of the Campbell Ministerial Association and making our commitment to being united against hate. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we thank you very much, Mayor Gibbons, for this nice gesture. Most of you on the council have recognized us. We've been here in the past. We meet as an interfaith council now. We've been together for three years. And one, part of the underpinnings of our association is to promote understanding among the various faith groups in this community. And it's been a pleasure this week to see such hopeful things happen, like the hundreds of people that were there for the march. I saw the mayor there. I saw members of our interfaith group. I saw several people from Campbell who stood in solidarity with the people in LaScatis, who have suffered some indications that there is some hate in the community that we need, that needs to be spoken up against. Swastikas at the synagogue and graffiti at the high school, making both racist and anti-Semitic and homophobic comments and naming teachers. So the youth need to understand and the citizens need to understand that this is not acceptable behavior. I, I had, in addition to that experience, that wonderful experience of being there Sunday with, with all of the citizens from this side of town. I had the opportunity a week ago on Tuesday to attend a meeting of the Jewish Democratic Club of Silicon Valley. And if you think about a place in the world that is kind of riven by hate, you think about the Palestinian question in Israel. But they sponsored a panel of young people, none older than Sergio, about that, about that same age, that particular generation, who disagreed on the subject of Palestine and yet were able to participate in civil discourse with one another and support one another and encourage the normal relationships between Israel and four different Arab states. The normalization of diplomatic relations with Jordan, the Emirates, Morocco, and Bahrain. And these young people were inspiring because of the stance that they were taking. I was surprised to hear that there are many flights every day between Dubai and Bahrain and Tel Aviv. And the number of tourists and businessmen have increased. And there's a gesture of goodwill from people that promote the concept of tolerance in those countries. And I'm pleased that we do so locally here because it is reflected globally when, when localities do this as well. So thank you very much on behalf of the Campbell Ministerial Association. We are all very pleased to have received this. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. And feel free to not feel obliged to stay for the length of the meeting. You're most welcome to come and stay, but you need not. We will now go to the next portion of the meeting, which is special presentations and proclamations. There are none before council this evening. Communications and petitions. There are no communications and petitions. We will now move on to oral requests. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda. Persons wishing to address the council are requested but not required to complete a speaker's card. Speakers are limited to two minutes. The law generally prohibits the council from discussion or taking action on such items. However, the council may instruct staff accordingly regarding oral requests. Has the clerk received any requests? There is nobody online with us this evening, and the two signups I have are not online. And there's no hands raised and there's no one in the audience wishing to speak on a non-agendized item? Thank you. We will now close that portion and move to the council announcements. With the holidays approaching, the City of Santa Clara Public Health Department recommends all eligible members of the public who live or work in Santa Clara County receive COVID-19 booster shots. The booster is appropriate for almost everyone ages 18 and older, six months following the last Pfizer or Moderna vaccination or two months following the Johnson and Johnson vaccination. County clinics are taking appointments at www.sccfreevax.org, and many locations already accept walk-in patients for booster shots. Pfizer, Moderna, and Johnson and Johnson vaccines are available within the county. Additionally, many doctors' offices and pharmacies provide COVID-19 boosters. And I think I saw an announcement today that at the fairgrounds, they have a space set up for children, for young ones, and it will be there for them while they're waiting to get their shots and after they have had their shots. So it's meant to be a very positive experience for both the child and the parent. The city clerk's office is accepting applications for the Park and Recreation Commission. To find out more about this commission, please contact the city clerk's office at 408-866-2117 or visit the city's website, www.camblecad.gov/boardsandcommissions, all one word. The deadline to apply for this position is Monday, December 20th at 5:00 p.m. The Campbell Senior Lunch Program reopened for indoor dining on November 1st. The Senior Nutrition Program offers nutritious meals for adults 60 years of age and older. Takeout meals are available and are on a first-come, first-served basis. Reservations are not required. The suggested contribution is $3 per meal. Menus are available online at camplecad.gov. For over 30 years, the Campbell Community Toy Program has been helping families residing in Campbell, San Jose, and adjoining cities. Community volunteers join together to donate, gather, organize, and distribute thousands of gifts through the program each year. For more information of ways to help, toy drop-off locations, volunteering, or how to sign up, please visit campletoyprogram, all one word, campletoyprogram.com. Holidays at the Ainsley House from November 18th through December 19th. The Ainsley House is open Thursday through Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. for unguided walkthrough tours. This year's holiday theme is joys of the season while visiting the Ainsley House stopped by the Museum Holiday Boutique. The Ainsley House is excited to celebrate their 27th season at noon on December 2nd through the 5th and December 9th through the 20th, 12th, excuse me, with holiday teas and tours inside the Carriage House. Enjoy a champagne tea followed by a self-guided tour of the Ainsley House decorated for the holidays. The holiday teas and tours are a museum fundraiser. I think, yeah, that should be available at www.camblemuseums, with an S, dot com. On Saturday, December 4th, Santa Claus will be coming to the Ainsley House from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., $10 per family. Please bring your own cameras for photos. For more information about joys of the season and other upcoming events at the Ainsley House or museum, please visit camplemuseums.com. City hall offices will be closed Thursday, November 25th and Friday, November 26th in observance of Thanksgiving Day holiday. And will reopen Monday, November 29th. Police and emergency services will remain open. We will now move on to the consent calendar. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered by the city council to be routine and will be enacted on by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a request is made by a member of the city council, city staff, or a member of the public. All persons wishing to speak on any item on the consent calendar should ask to have the item removed from the consent calendar prior to the time the council votes to approve. If removed, the item will be discussed in the order in which it appears. Is there anyone from the council staff or a member of the public wishing to pull an item? Okay. Then we would have a motion on items one, two, three. Four. Four. I'll make a motion to approve consent calendar.
A second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Landry, seconded by Councilmember Lopez. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Bybee, aye. Councilwoman Landry, aye. Councilmember Lopez, aye. Vice Mayor Resnickoff, aye. Mayor Gibbons, aye.
Thank you. That motion passes unanimously. We will move on to public hearings and introduction of ordinances. This evening, there are no public hearings or introduction of ordinances. Therefore, we will move on to the new businesses, new business items. Item number five, discuss process for annual selection of mayor and vice mayor. The recommended action is that the city council discuss and provide direction to staff on the appointment method for the mayor and vice mayor. And city clerk Dusty Christoffersen has a presentation for us.
Just a brief introduction, if I may. The item before you tonight is to discuss the process. Now that the city is organized by districts, had our first district election in 2020, the second one will be in 2022, then all five districts will be in districts. And so this item brings forward a topic for you to discuss about how the future mayor and vice mayor are selected now that we're in districts and no longer in the, the citywide process. And so in the staff report included in your packet, it describes the traditional process, which is the highest vote getter in that citywide election was nominated for the mayor and then everybody would vote. And second vote getter would be vice mayor and everybody would vote on that. And since now we have five districts and they are selected in different elections, that process is not really a viable option for us moving forward. And so there's also a recommendation for you, before you to discuss as a starting point to do the rotation based on district number. I just want to stress that this is just as one suggestion. There are other ways that you could go about doing this, but this is just one suggestion. In the staff report, it does talk about a council may decline when it's their turn. And we realized that that may be necessary if there's a new council member, somebody's not ready to take on the mayor or not willing. They would then be slated at the next spot in a normal rotation. And then it also describes the fact that this does, just because it's written this way, it doesn't preclude another vote. Council always votes by majority and, and the vote will, will move forward regardless of the schedule. So this is just a jumping start point. From here, we're just asking council kind of discuss and then direct staff if you'd like us to formalize it into a county, or excuse me, a council policy, or if you would like to leave it in a unwritten process moving forward. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, city clerk. We will open it to council for questions. Yes, Councilmember Lopez.
Um, thank you, Dusty. Just a brief clarification. This, this might be, I'm guessing this is probably pretty obvious, but could you spell out what next natural place means that you mean? Essentially, they'd skip for, what, four or five years?
Yeah, so the suggestion we put forward was to rotate it through the district numbers, one, two, three, four, five. So if District One, for instance, declines when it's their opportunity, they would go back to the end of District Five so that it doesn't interfere with the other council members who would come next in line. It's a suggestion we're making. It doesn't mean that it needs to stay.
Thank you. May I then open the public hearing and see if there's anyone in the audience or online that would like to speak to this item?
Nobody is online.
Thank you. Seeing no comments, we will bring the meeting back to discussion from the council. And I will perhaps start this off with a couple of observations. It's very important, and I appreciate staff bringing this forward to the council, so thank you. I think the question I had, comment I have, is that if, and I did check the rotation with the city clerk. There are opportunities when the rotation going forward in this table might end up having a newly elected person. And yes, they could decline to take the mayorship. But I'm wondering if any of the council would be supportive of having an additional clarifier, which simply says that in order to be mayor, you need to be on the council at least one full year before assuming the role of mayor. He could say serve as one year as vice mayor, but that might be too restrictive. So that was one comment that I had, and I do have another one, but is there any thought or comment on that? Yeah, and I'm going to say we're reverting back to our rules for the room here. I'm looking for the speaker mics to be lit up, and I will do my best. I'm looking for the speaker mics to be lit up, and I will do my best to see the mics lit up. So Councilwoman Landry.
Uh, yes, I had a similar concern to, as you mentioned, about a newly elected person never having been on council that could theoretically be a right away mayor, which I don't think is right and also not fair to the other people who have been on council. I like the order. I think District Five should go first. And maybe in addition to saying you have to have served on at least one year, maybe something about if the incumbent wins reelection, it stays. I don't know if that helps. So for instance-
I was just trying to keep it simple.
Okay, well, so the one thing is, does, okay, let me ask it as a question, Liz. By having to be on for one year, then that would solve the issue of the incumbent who wins reelection staying in the order?
No, the incumbent stays in the order as is in this chart. Right, irrespective of the, of the, being an incumbent or not. It just, it's just to help, it primarily to help staff as well as the council to have someone with some modicum of experience to manage the role of mayor and the council and staff.
Okay, yes, I agree with you.
I think Councilmember Lopez was next, then a council member Bybee, and then the vice mayor.
Yeah, thank you. And just to keep it simple, are we responding to, to that, that point that you brought up for now?
I think that might be helpful.
Yeah, I'm happy to. So I, I'll just say broadly, I'm, I'm really supportive of this and also grateful to staff. I, I just think it's great to have a written process and take the politics out of it as much as we can. So I, I had a similar concern, and as it stands for me right now, I could go either way depending on the discussion. I do, I did a little bit of research on my own, and there are cities that have had people elected on their first year become mayor, and from what I can see as an outsider, you know, maybe if you ask them, it's different, but I'm, I'm not sure that in those cases it's caused huge issues. But I'm, I'm also open to us having our, our own policy. I, I wonder if a way of doing that, just putting this out there, I'm not, I'm not married to this, but could it be that the newly elected person in that scenario serves as vice mayor, and then the next year they serve as, as mayor? I don't want to overcomplicate it, but I just put that out there for a discussion and response.
Thank you. Councilmember Bybee?
Thank you. I did talk to another elected official whose board follows the district rotation, and that was a question I had. Well, what happens if you have an election where you have a new person that has, doesn't have experience and may not be ready to take on the role of the mayor, and they suggest it or said that their, their policy is that, excuse me, I have a little frog in my throat tonight, that they flip flop so that, let's say it's District Three and Four that have an election, the District Four person would serve as the mayor, the District Three would be the vice mayor, and then they would flop it, flip flop for the next year so that person doesn't lose his, his or her rotation. And that seems to work for them, so I, I think that might be a, a way to solve, solve the issue.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Resnick?
Yeah, excuse me. I had the same thought and then a little bit of a devil's advocate to myself, and you could have the worst case where three, four, five are all new in one year. I didn't do the math, but I'm sure it comes up at some point where they're three. So you have to run the slips just to skip three people at that point, so be aware of that. And then I was just thinking in cities that elect a mayor, anybody can run for mayor, and you can go to and become the mayor of San Jose and never have served on anything. So part of me was thinking, okay, that you could have prior experience, the one year of council takes care of that. If you, if you leave council, come back. But there are cities where people just run and they get elected. So that kind of got me back to, it's up to the council. I mean, one thing we have to make sure in this policy, I think, is whatever we come up with is a policy, and that council at that time can, can do what they want. So in my scenario where we had three, four, five all elected and do it one time, perhaps they want to control that council. I think it's the right, probably, that's, that's the only thing that, that caused me to say, wait a second. Do you push back a majority if they are in fact a majority? I don't know. I mean, I'm open to doing it. And I think even if we say that, I suppose a future council can change it.
Can change it.
But the problem, one last thing, the problem is they can't change it in that year because they do the rotation in their very first meeting, so they wouldn't have the opportunity. One thing, one thing I thought of at last call make is we bring back either every year, every other year, or at least with new councils, the ethics policy and things like that. Perhaps bring this back at the same time and let that council in their first or second January, it's after they've made that first one, take a look at it, consciously look at it and say, is this still appropriate? And that might, that might, if they feel it's out of whack, they can fix it.
So I'll, I'll offer, I, I challenged myself on that too, but you know, if it's, if three win and they want to control a council, that's why they get elected. They got the majority votes, they can do it anyway. So I didn't think it was so much of a problem. Frankly, my question has a lot to do with experiences in, in our neighboring councils last year. When they didn't have a clear process, it was pretty chaotic. So knowing that the council can, anyone can put their name forward, but there is a process and an expectation that's understood. And anyone can put their name forward and there can be a vote, but at least the names are placed into on the ballot and people can then vote. I, it was really, I liked it because it gave a process, always vote differently. I'm okay. I, I, I personally feel very strongly that the person who becomes mayor should be on the council at least one year, in no small measure, because I think it's relevant to staff. And unlike San Jose or even Sunnyvale that elect mayor separately, they have a staff that supports the office of the mayor and they have continuity. We don't. We are who we are in our roles. So I, I liked the idea of requiring a minimum of one year. I'm fine with clarification that if that ever happens, there could be a swap. An expectation of a swap in roles rather than going all the way back to the bottom, that there could be a swap. I'm absolutely fine with that as an expectation. Of course, it can change based on whoever is on the council at the time. I do have one other comment that I'd like to make before we vote, but is there any kind of a, yes, sir?
Yeah, let me just, I agree with you, by the way, on the experience. I really do. I'm just throwing it out there. I, I thought about it both ways. As, to me, as long as it's a policy and there's an understanding that the, that council controls that vote and can decide we're putting a different name up if that's what they want to do. I'm fine. It's not cast in stone, right? It's, it's a guideline, and I think it'll change over time, so I'm okay with that.
Can I just respond to that point before?
Please.
Uh, yeah, so I, I really appreciate the discussion. I, I absolutely agree, looking at the experience of, of neighboring cities. Just to play devil's advocate a little bit more, and I, Vice Mayor, I appreciate you, you doing the same, because like, as you can see, I, I could, I, I, I could ultimately go either way, but the, the voter, if someone is next in the rotation, the voters, when they're making that decision, will know and presumably take that into account. So I did, I also come back to the, the fact that, you know, just as in the example of if, if there's a majority of, of new folks. You, you know, ultimately, I think it's the voter's decision, you know, how much, if, if they want to, you know, they're able to take that consideration. So I, I just throw that perspective out there as well.
Thank you. So I think there's a reasonable amount of consensus. We might want to tweak, tweak the wording a little bit. But I'd like to bring up one other item that I believe is in tandem with this. We may not want to vote on it, but I think it's directly relevant. And again, it's related to staff. There is some question as to whether we would be benefit from having a policy where cities' decisions, the council members' decisions are not based on the district in which they're elected. I E, we wouldn't ask for a budget for District One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. We wouldn't ask for road improvements and pay, repaving the districts One, Two, Three, Four, and Five. We wouldn't ask for parks. The council for the city of Campbell has always been aware of and responsive to the city as a whole, and staff has always managed the work and planning for the city as a whole. And we have recently had a couple of situations come to our attention, at least I have, and I think others may have as well, where people have said, I elected you, you are my district person, you will vote the way I want you to vote, or you will be recalled. And it would be nice if, I think, if council members don't feel that pressure that they have the ability to vote in the best interests of the community and/or their district if they so choose. But to have an expectation that the city would then be divided. I mean, like San Jose, which is of course much larger city, which is part of the issue, they get budgets. Each council member gets a budget, each, everything goes by district. So I'm, what I would like to suggest is we're going to ask staff to come back with a, a policy about the rotation of mayor. I'd like to suggest for discussion here, if we might want to ask staff to come back with a policy that guides decisions for the city as a whole, rather than by district. And I, I do think it would benefit staff, so that's a question. I don't know. Yes, thank.
I think that's muddying the waters of what we're talking about tonight. I agree with I, I get that. I'm just saying tonight the vote is on this rotation, and I think the other part that you're bringing up should be a separate conversation, and there's not enough information to me to have a vote on that.
So let me be very careful in what I'm saying. I'm not saying vote on it. I'm saying have council bring, bring back something about it.
When?
Whenever we, whenever they-
So not like when this comes back at the same time?
It doesn't have to be, no, but I just think it's important to do something. But I'm not, we clearly don't have enough information to make the decision tonight, but if we could provide staff direction, that information regarding that would be appropriate. Uh, Vice Mayor?
Yeah. At this point, I, I don't, I don't really think it's necessary, and I don't see the problem. The I voted for you therefore argument has been around forever, will always be around. And I don't think that's an argument driven by districts. I think it's an argument of driven by votes. But I don't, I'm not aware of it ever having been a problem. I'm not aware of anybody operating differently. Absent some reason to think we would operate that differently, I'm not sure it's necessary, but it's just my thought. And, and I would agree, it's not, it is unrelated to this, so we wouldn't be doing it tonight. But it's a, we're making a statement, but I'm not sure that there's a problem that we're addressing.
So could I ask the city manager, because we have had conversations about this?
Yeah, certainly, I'd be glad to add some clarity. And this has been a discussion a couple of times at exec team as well, is how do we prepare ourselves for future decisions and the effects of district election on just about everything we do? From road projects to budgeting. And I, I think it, it, and, and maybe it's more a natural discussion when we bring the districting discussion back up, and we can do that. But, but the, the concept was, when we first did the districting in two thousand nineteen, there was comments made by the council members, although we're going to districts that were all really representing the city interests as whole. And, and I think that's the, the, the concept that we're trying to get at, is embracing that. And we don't have to do that this evening. It, I think it is going to raise its head, and those are the discussions we're having at staff level, learning from other cities in unexpected ways. Questions about equity, when we get, go out and get grants, there was a question, I think, by councilmember Lopez. And rightly so, when we were doing a, a project out here about, you know, grants in other districts. Not always in, in huge ways, but there will be continued, and, and so anything we can do to help provide some clarity in that, probably in the districting, if there's a council philosophy on it, I think would be helpful. It, it certainly could be something that we would, we could bring up when we bring the district. I know we're talking about district elections later on tonight's agenda, but that may not be the appropriate place, perhaps, when we come back in, in, in early two thousand twenty-two and talk about districting and talk about the new maps, maybe that's the time to be considering policy language or any discussion. But the, the issue is important, and, and like I said, it, it has garnered some substantial discussion on the exec team of just how we on staff prepare for that, so. I don't know that we need to address it here, but, but it is an issue, and, and perhaps we, we can bring that back at the district election if that's the pleasure. When we have those discussions, if that's a pleasure of the council.
Thank you.
I can't tell if your light on.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine if it comes back as part of that discussion, and I, I think it's a legitimate discussion to have. I'm not at the point where I'm convinced that there's a problem, and therefore we need to bring back a, a separate item on this. But I'm, I'm open to further discussion of it at a future point.
Councilmember Bybee?
I would concur with that, and I think it is a better discussion with the district elections, map selection that in, in twenty twenty-two. But, and, and to follow up on the vice mayor's point, you know, we, as elected officials at being elected as, as at large, get the same type of comments, well, I left you, this is the way I want you to vote. I mean, it's, it's either, it's that way citywide. It, it's, and it's going to be district-wide, but, but as an elected representative of the city, I represent all, all the people rather than just my own district, so clarifying that would be helpful, and, you know, in, in some type of a, a, a statement or a policy.
Thank you. I, I appreciate the discussion because it is relevant to how we go forward. So with that, if someone would like to make a-
I actually had another point on this.
I'm sorry, your light doesn't show, so thank you.
Yeah, well, I have to take that, thank you.
We've challenged that before.
One thing that came to mind for me when, when I was reading it is whether we need to clean up. And city manager, I, I looked at your guidance for the, you know, the, the correct process for potentially addressing this. But whether we need to clean up the language that says that a council member would need to take a twenty-two month break before running again. Reason being that if we're on this cycle and if we have districts, that would come in the middle of a term. So at, at the very least, some cleanup to update that, that language.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow your comment.
There's a, there's a policy that councilor can serve two terms. And then, and thank you to staff for looking up the, the exact language, then take a twenty-two month break and then run aga- again. Or, and, and so that twenty-two months just seems like a non sequitur if we're going with this policy, because it would be in the middle of a term. I'd say, imagine, I don't know if you-
Yeah, so Vice Mayor and-
Yeah, I have a comment.
I do understand, the issue now is you have to wait two years bef, two years out of office, and then you can run again. In this instance, you really have to wait four years out because you're in a district that is presumably you've been replaced. Before, however, the only way around that is, and I think this is what councilmember Lopez is going at, you could move districts. And is it the intent that somebody could be elected for two terms, move to another district, and in two years run, run again? And that, that, that's, that's the question. If, if that isn't the desire, then the twenty-two months should be forty-six months.
Okay, so I would argue that that isn't part of the discussion tonight. I don't see the relationship of that to the discussion tonight. Yes.
I, I, I would agree with that. That's probably into the districting discussion as well. But I wanted to clarify, I understood the question.
Is that what you're getting at?
That was the, that was the concern, is these extended out to make a four years?
I, I, I think that's one of the concerns, and at a very minimum, it would just be updating the language to make sure it, it's current.
Uh, Councilwoman Landry?
It's odd that it's twenty-two months, but when I talked to Mike Potowski, the reason it's that is he filled the term for two months. And that way, that doesn't preclude him from the two consecutive terms that he was able to do those extra months. That's why it's not a full twenty-four months, was the history behind that for Mike Potowski.
The, the Campbell history, and thank you. So I think that's another issue for council and staff to work through. And it will be different base, I hadn't even thought about the four-year cycle and moving districts. Councilmember Bybee?
Well, actually, the, the where that originated was a ballot initiative that went to the voters to establish term limits. And the language in there specifically- And the language in there specifically speaks to the 22 months. So that a person had to sit, sit out a full four years before running for reelection. And that's what, that's how the language is.
Thank you for being our legal historian. That'll be interesting challenge for staff to look at and decide, because if it was voter approved, it may challenge how we move forward. Council member Lopez.
And I think the city manager, I appreciate truly all the history. I think the city manager may have done research on, on that particular point.
And I think council member Barbie is correct. It is, it was voter approved. And so changing that would require going back to the voters again. And, and that's, that would be the process we would go through to change that.
So there are a few loose ends that we will need to be.
I'm sorry, we can make sure that when we bring back those district elections, we'll, we'll address that issue more specifically. And the other issue, the specific discussion on those points.
Yeah, I think very helpful discussion on a range of topics. So thank you all. And who would like to make a motion? And I would say that the motion would have the potential, given the conversation, for a variation of a term of service on the council prior to sitting in, something like that.
I'll, I'll attempt to motion.
Okay.
I make a motion.
Landry.
I make a motion that the city council approve the schedule as written in the staff memo where District Five would start in 2022 and then rotate sequentially through numbers. But that a minimum of one year on council would need to occur before someone was mayor. And that if that does occur, then the two districts can, what did we say, swap? So that you get that one year experience.
So may I offer one correction and one clarification, District Five would start in 2023.
I'm sorry, because the election is 2022.
So yes, 2023. And rather, you use something should be or something, I would say it is desirable for the mayor to serve on the council for one year prior to becoming mayor.
So the word desirable instead of should.
Should.
Okay, I accept that.
Some, something like that. And I being, those were my two clarifications. Vice Mayor.
So, so I agree with desirable, and that lets them do, I'm, I'm not sure, I want to go as far as discussing a flip. If, if it's desirable, and if they choose to ignore that, they can ignore it. But if they choose to take it, then it's their decision on who they go to. So, um, yeah, I would, I would, it just complicates it, but I think they're going to have to have some leeway.
Yes, sir.
Um, I, I actually would want to keep the language about the flip. And I, and again, I don't want to overcomplicate it too much, but I, I don't want to give the impression that we would be discriminating in some way against someone because they're new, pushing them to the back of the line. Um, I know we've had that discussion, we know that's not the intent. But in terms of what's written as a policy, I'm thinking of what's going to avoid issues or, or politics or feel, you know, like someone's being targeted. So that part is important to me.
Council member Barbie, would you like to add some clarity?
Could we add something to say consideration could be given to flip flopping or changing the order? To allow that district person to gain an experience so that he does, he or she doesn't lose their turn, the rotation. Would, would that be?
So what would be some language? You were. If, if a newly elected official steps aside, there would be, it would be anticipated that their position in the rotation would be a consideration? Something? I'm struggling.
So, so I'm, I'm, it's my understanding that we're directing staff and they're going to come back with a policy for us to approve, is that our understanding? So what I'm suggesting is some, some wording to that effect to, to consider, the council will consider changing the rotation between the two districts. So that that person doesn't lose the, their, their, their place in the rotation.
Yeah.
So there wasn't a second on my motion, so can I reword the motion?
Before you do that, if I, so I'm wondering if maybe instead of getting that specific, even a year, we say consideration may be given to a council member's experience on council at the time of the vote. Or something like that. It's open-ended, it raises the issue that maybe they should have experience. Counsel, what do you want to do? Exactly.
Okay. The floor is councilwoman Landry's. See if she wants to withdraw her motion or reword her motion, and then we'll see. Because as councilmember Barbie just said, we are providing direction to staff. So they're going to come back.
If you want to reword it, I'd second for discussion and propose a rewording. Is that okay?
Say that again.
If you're willing to reword it, let me second it for discussion and.
Okay, second.
So second for discussion, and I would propose removing the flip-flop language, removing the one year and saying consideration may be given to a council member's experience on council at the time of the selection of mayor and vice mayor.
I accept.
And then let staff tweak that to something. It, it leaves it open for that council to have a lot of leeway, but, but we, we're telling them what, how, how we think it should be done. Now go do it anyway you want, really.
I would accept that friendly amendment.
Okay. Council member Lopez and council member Barbie.
So I, I'm okay with that change in language. But I really like councilmember Barbie's phrasing on top of that. And, and again, just the reason is that I, I think the more it's left open-ended, the more we could get into politics because of relationships. So, so I think that language is, is okay, but I think councilor Barbie, for me, strikes the right balance with including the, the intent.
I'll just add, if I may, for councilmember Barbie's benefit, I, I'd like something a little more concrete.
Repeat it, please, if you wouldn't mind. Or come up with a new one.
That the council would consider the elected officials' experience and, and possibly consider switching between the two districts to allow the newly elected official to have a year experience before becoming mayor, so they don't lose their turn in the rotation.
There might be three districts involved.
Oh.
That's the only, it's the only.
And I'm, you know, I'm just trying to give.
Right, I think if we come up with the concept that there will be consideration given to their experience. And as a remedy for that, perhaps the council can consider a temporary change in the rotation. A one-time temporary change in the rotation to accommodate that, that experience or something of that nature.
I, I like that language that, so.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, so your second.
So I would just give my two cents, which is, I would like to see, and when it comes back from the staff. I, I personally think that we should be a little clearer. Be only because, I'm a little more definitive, only because of what's happened in surrounding cities. So when you come back, we'll just see what you bring back.
Yeah, if, if I can, I think my suggestion would include your suggestion that there's a desire in the council that, that the mayor has served on one year in the council. In, in consideration of that, the council may consider going forward with councilmember Barbie's suggestion. In addition, I, I would combine both of those to make sure it was clear.
I, I think I know what you're talking about with city. There's a way around that, and the way around that is to, is to put in the policy that mayor and vice mayor nominations shall be voted on in the order of nomination. And that was where they went in trouble. If they would, if you, if you nominate and then vote on that nomination, it takes away their entire problem they had. For those who don't know, their issue was, we, the, the policy was, you can nominate up to three people. And then we will vote on them in reverse order of nomination. So anybody who wanted it didn't want to be nominated first or second, so it's, they just sat quiet for minutes. And it was very awkward. But if we, if we say what we've always done, you have a nomination, you vote on it, that problem goes away.
Well, I think the problem doesn't exist if you simply say the policy is, the rotation is the rotation. Anyone else can put their name in, and then you can basically have a voice vote. You don't have to not vote in order, you can just do a voice vote, and that would get rid of that problem too. So have we given staff enough direction? And do you need a motion?
This was going to be my question.
Perhaps maybe I can explain what I, what I understand is the direction. And, and, and we can incorporate that in the, in the motion. The, the staff will come back with a policy with some draft language that, that mirrors the staff report and the district rotations. But also indicates it's the council's desire that the mayor has served previously for one year on, on the council. And that the council in those instances, where that doesn't occur, can provide consideration for the elected to consider a temporary adjustment of the rotation system to accommodate that council member.
So moved.
Oh, sorry.
But do we need to vote on this is the question, Brian?
I, I think it, it would be clear for the record.
Okay, so you got a second on.
So we have a motion from councilwoman Landry and a second from vice mayor Resnikov. May we have a roll call, please? Council member Barbie.
Hi.
Councilwoman Landry.
Hi.
Council member Lopez.
Hi.
Vice mayor Resnikov.
Hi.
Mayor Gibbons.
Hi. Thank you all. I think that was a very productive discussion. Thank you.
Excuse me. We will now move on to an unfinished business item. This is Campbell Park Improvement Project 17 DD, report of bid results with staff recommendation to reject our bids, authorization to advertise and award a project with minor scope modifications and all other associated actions. This is a role, a resolution with a roll call vote. And we're having a presentation by the Public Works Director, Scott, Scott, Todd, Todd Cabersa.
Thank you. How soon they forget. Nice to see you this evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. We're going to have a, a presentation for you regarding Campbell Park and the recent bid results. This will be kind of a three-part shot, so the presentation, I am not leading the presentation, but I will hand it over to two other folks along the way. And first, let me give you a, a brief history of why we're here. I know many of you have been on the council for a while and are familiar with Campbell Park. But the Campbell Park project actually goes all the way back to when we did our, our, our park inventory and assessment. And we found that many of our playgrounds and restroom facilities were of aging, aging condition and, and in need of replacement. And so we did nominate several projects at that point. We worked through Jack Fisher Park, we've recently gone through John D. Morgan, and here we are at Campbell Park. You can see that the, the original project was funded back in 2017, hence the project number 17 DD. And it has experienced a lot of input and, and feedback from members of the community, the Parks and Rec Commission. And there was a point where the project was actually ahead of John D. Morgan in, in its, in its term. And we elected to allow John D. Morgan to move forward because of the grant that we had successfully obtained through Santa Clara County and the funding constraints and time constraints that were, that were put on that project. And so we actually moved a John D. Morgan ahead and began, then kind of deferred on, on, on Campbell Park. So we put the project, actually, we put the project scope together. We, we hired Calendar and Associates to help, to help with the design. We entered into a consultant agreement with them back in 2019. And as we were moving forward with the project design, we actually were, were fortunate enough to bring some additional resources to the project. We obtained some funding through the California Department of Parks and Recreation, the Prop 68 per capita funds. We were able to enter into an agreement with the state of California on that. To, we entered into the grant agreement as required to have an agreement by June 20, June 2022. But we do need to complete the project with those funds by December of 23. So that kind of sets the context for where we are with our funding and our constraints. What we're going to do this evening is, because we are required to take action on this within, within 90 days of receiving the bids, we're getting dangerously close to that, that's why we're here tonight. What we're first going to do is hand it over to David Rubin of Calendar and Associates. And he will walk you through the bid results, some things that may be contributed to that in terms of, of market conditions. And he will, and he will compare some very recent projects and how the bid climate has changed. He will also make some recommendations for some scope modifications that if the council concurs, we can take those forward and make some modifications to the project. And then at the conclusion of that, we will hand it over to city engineer Amy Olay, and she will walk you through the, the alternative that, that we've developed, how that compares to maybe some other ideas, why we are recommending that particular alternative. And then she will also describe some actions that we could take moving forward with regard to cost estimating and keep making sure that our, our, our bids and cost estimate, cost estimates remain current as we see forward. So without further ado, I'm going to step aside and hand it over to Dave Rubin, who I see up on the screen now. So he'll be taking you through the bid results. Thank you.
Thank you, Todd. So I think Todd gave a pretty good summary of what I'm going to cover. So what, what I wanted to talk about here are the bid results. So the, the project was put out for public bid in August with an engineer's estimate of 1,661,000. On August 25th, the city received bids from three contractors, and they were Goodland Landscape, Robert A. Bothman, and Suarez, Suarez and Munoz.
Excuse me, David. Can you speak a little louder, turn your mic up or move closer to your mic?
Sure.
Thank you.
Yeah, so, sorry about that. Can you hear me a little better? Okay. And so Goodland was the low bidder at 2,272,000, which was 611,000 or 37% above the engineer's estimate. The other two bids came within 11% of the low bid. Next slide, please. After receiving these bids, we wanted to answer the question, what are the drivers for the large discrepancy between the estimate and the bids received for the project? And so we reached out to cost estimators, other landscape architects in the Bay Area, and one of the bidders as well on this project just to learn more. Some of the macroeconomic factors include inflation, supply chain disruption, increased prices for raw materials such as steel, wire, plastics and lumber, increased freight costs due to rising fuel prices, strong contractor backlog, which is really to say that contractors are generally very busy right now, and as well as seasonal pricing fluctuation. Contractor pricing is typically higher in the summer than it is in the winter, when they're trying to fill their backlog of work. So when speaking with one of the bidders on this project, they noted some site-specific challenges, including a small work area, working in and around the topography of the, of the park site, as well as overseeing numerous trades and suppliers for the project. So while bid pricing for this project was certainly high, the grouping of pricing is relatively tight. And it does suggest that bidders were reading the documents consistently and that this is what the project cost in, in the current bid climate. Next slide, please. So we had discussions with peers who also work primarily in the public sector and heard similar challenges related to pricing unpredictability. I won't read these quotes verbatim, but they do echo many of the macroeconomic factors that I mentioned on the prior slide, including supply chain issues, spiking material costs, labor shortages, and, and just general impacts related to the Delta variant that did affect the economy this summer. Next slide, please. So as part of our research, we reviewed recent bid data going back to February. The seven projects you see listed here are all located in the South Bay or on the peninsula and are all public works projects with the most recent bid on top, and that was in early October, and the oldest bid at the bottom, which was February. So for each project, the blue bar represents the low bid. The orange bar represents the high bid, and the yellow star is the engineer's estimate. The percentage value you see to the right of those bars is the variance between the low bid and the engineer's estimate. And so what this shows is that bids were coming in fairly close to the engineer's estimate until the middle of the year, at which point bid pricing started to spike. In one of our conversations with a cost estimator, they saw pricing follow a similar pattern starting in the summer. And he noted that pricing has started to level off at this point, but they don't see prices necessarily coming back down for the foreseeable future. So I think at this point, I think it's worth taking a moment just to discuss how we put our estimates together. We do go to great lengths to maintain a bid comparison database of all of our project bids. Bid unit pricing from the most recent project. Bid unit pricing from the most recent project bids is used to develop cost estimates. And those cost estimates are updated at every milestone along the way, just as they were for this project. But it is worth noting that cost estimates are inherently backward-looking because they're based on bid pricing from, from the recent past. Next slide, please. So where did we go from here? We worked with city staff in, in developing some potential scope modifications. You know, that don't also negatively impact desired project goals. And so through that process, we identified a handful of minor scope modifications that would offer cost savings should the project be rebid. So starting with the restroom building, we modified the specification to list two manufacturers or approved equal instead of one manufacturer or approved equal. In the discussions that we had with the bidder afterward, we heard that there was some hesitancy to list an alternative manufacturer, even though it reportedly offered significantly, potentially significantly lower pricing to the project. The restroom otherwise is unchanged from previous design. We've also suggested the removal of landscape boulders from the project. While they are aesthetically pleasing for the project, they're not essential to the overall success of the project. Another suggested scope modification is to reduce the length of seat wall along the upper pathway and replace with two benches. So we're still providing seating in that area. Integral color for the concrete pavement is another scope reduction that doesn't affect the functionality of the park. And so we are recommending that as a, as a scope modification. And lastly, we are suggesting the removal of the Beaver Lodge and the Concrete Beaver that we had shown in the play area, and replacement with a more cost-effective element. And so, who can go back one? And so here's an image of what that was going to be. It's a precast element. And so, you know, these were custom, they were fairly expensive, and allowed children to climb in, and in and among that, and find a quiet place. So on the next slide, you'll see we've recommended some replacements. And so on the lower left, that's a cozy dome, which really provides a lot of the same physical features that the Beaver Lodge did. It just doesn't have the, the theming as much. And the Beaver is also replaced with a rope pole and is now on the embankment. So we, I think we've actually increased play value by providing more play on the embankment. So I think at this point, I am going to turn it over to Amy, and she'll discuss the alternatives before you this evening.
Thanks, Dave. So what you just heard from Dave is really the approach that we are considering as part of the recommended approach, so that we can move this project towards construction, and that is to reject all bids and rebid the project with these minor adjustments. So before we came to the conclusion of these, of this particular recommendation, we looked at four different alternatives, right? And what we did was really focused on the fiscal and project objective standpoint. And looking at three of the four alternatives, the disadvantages outweigh the advantages. So we really wanted to then hone in on the recommended approach. So the way we see the recommended approach is that it does require minor modifications to the scope. But these modifications, taking a deep dive into what we saw in the bid results from the August bid items, we were able to see where would we be able to select certain items and revisit them for cost effectiveness purposes. So just as Dave mentioned, you know, like the Beaver Lodge, for instance, and the, and the, and the Beaver concrete little sculpture, they're very nice. But replacing it with the cozy dome and the rope pole in the totlock play area, you know, provides the play value, and maybe even more so. And so we're really not taking away from the objectives of the park project at all. So those are the things that we really consider in coming up with this recommended approach. But I must say, though, that this recommendation does come with some risks, right? Because we, although those changes are minor, we're able to repackage the plans and the specs rather quickly. They're actually ready to go. It does come with risk, because we put it back out for advertisement. We really don't know how the results, the bid results are going to come in. But we have done the best that we can and really looking at all the differences, all the different nuances, and trying to look at how the market is today. And so what we see is that with this recommended approach, we will still require a budget increase. But the budget increase is still a hundred thousand dollars less than if we were to award the project to the lowest bidder from the August bid result. So with council's approval, the plans and specs, as I mentioned, with the alternative one, the recommended approach, it's really ready to go, and we can start advertising that project for bid in the upcoming weeks. One of the things about bidding the project during the winter month is that we may be able to take advantage of when contractor backlog is low and possibly resulting in a more favorable bid. So, you know, I think as we go through every project, there's always something that we can learn from, right? And we always strive to, to improve our process. And then, so this is just one of those, I know a lot, this is completely unexpected, but it's really the climate that we are in today, right? It's really unprecedented times. But nevertheless, I think it's worth, it, it is important for staff to be able to look at, well, how can we do things better? And the way that we approach this is we have some ideas here, and I don't think they'd apply to every project that we have moving forward. But for instance, like the third-party cost estimator for projects. I think that would make a whole lot of sense for certain projects, especially those that have very unique scope with multiple trades and perhaps very large scale. But this certainly isn't an approach that we want to implement for very routine CIP projects, because it may not justify the, justify the added cost to hire a third-party cost estimator. So I do want to share that with council. The other thing that we can do is during the RFP process, put more emphasis on how the cost estimate, cost estimating method and process is viewed. We could require design teams to provide us estimating methodologies as part of their proposals. Another thing that we can look at is, and this is something that we are doing already, but maybe just paying a little bit more attention, I think in particular, if it's projects that we are working with the consultant team. And that's really making sure that we validate and then go through various checkpoints through the design process, right? That's something that, like I said, we already have that in place, but maybe we need to be a little bit more diligent in looking at those while looking at what is occurring in the bidding environment. Well, how is it looking with different projects? And then finally, before we put the project out to bid, it's good to do a recheck. You know, sometimes we get into the, the situation where by ninety-five, we feel pretty comfortable. But I think seeing how things are, it, it's worth our while to do a final recheck just to see. And then maybe there are other projects that have just recently opened bids, you know, in our nearby cities, similar-sized projects, similar-scale projects. That would be really something that, that would be worth our while doing. So these are the things that, you know, as staff, we're looking at. And, and, you know, with, with cost estimating and engineer's estimate, it's just, it's not an exact science. So it's just one of those things where we really try to put our best experience and our knowledge together to come up with the best engineer's estimate and put up, put out a package that we think it really does stand for, for itself, and then for that time period. So with that, I think that concludes our presentation, and that brings us to the question and answer. And we are glad, we're happy to take your, any questions you may have.
Thank you, Amy and David and Todd. Can you take your slides down for us? And we'll look at the screen. Thank you very much. And we have questions. And Todd, are you going to field the questions?
I will attempt to.
Okay. I didn't see who was first.
So Todd, let me start with this. Dave mentioned, and it's in the staff report, reluctance to have second manufacturer in the, in the restroom. But it looked like in the staff report, that reluctance was by the bidders, because it said, it said, or equal, and they could have gone to someone else. Why, why was it reluctant for them to go to a, to a lower cost, a two-parter? And then, and then moving forward, instead of an or equal, can we insist on that in a bid, that you go to a lower-cost subcontractor? We can't.
Uh, well, there's a lot in that question, so thank you for that.
First one is, it seemed like it wasn't staff, it wasn't count, it was, it was, all the bidders had this option and said, we're going with a higher price.
That, why? That's true, and, and it's, it's most likely because they went with the one that, that we had called out by name. And, and, and for a contractor to, to do the research for the approved equal is going to be a little bit of additional work on, on their part. Now, now you heard a little bit from David and a little bit from Amy about contractor backlog. So, so there is, you know, there's probably this undercurrent that contractors have a lot of, they have plenty of work. And so any additional work that they take on to, to perhaps make a bid more competitive, you know, I, I think that's a business decision that they have to make about how much work do they want to put in. Coming back to the restroom, though specifically, there are really only two manufacturers that make modular restrooms. And at the time that we began this project, we identified the one where we actually had a lower quotation from. And what happened over time is the quotations flipped, and we, we were just, we're not aware of that. You know, other market conditions that, at, at play there, and so we, we, we kept the spec with the restroom. I think it's fair that because there's only two, there's not like infinite numbers of, of other types of equipment. So I think we can call out both, and that's, that was the suggestion that, that you heard.
So, okay, so hindsight's twenty-twenty. We have all both, if there's more, both or equal or whatever, give them an option. The other part I have is with the cost-wise. Do, do we have, additional cost is going to come from the Parks Dedication Fund, I assume?
That would be the, that's the.
Is there enough money in there to cover this?
Uh, the short answer is yes, but you know, we, we, we don't take that lightly. But, but our Parks Fund is, is doing relatively well. We currently have, have a balance of a little bit o, o, over two million. And that is fairly consistent over the projected five-year period that we've seen in the, in the, in the CIP. So we have revenue in, we have projects budgeted out. So currently, at the end of the five-year period, I think we are showing about two-point-two, two-point-three million. If we make this budget adjustment, I think we would end up with a one-point-seven million projection at the end of the five-year period.
Does that include an influx from Cressley?
It does not. What, what, but what it does include is that we generally project about four-hundred thousand of revenue there annually. And we know that Cressley alone is going to come in higher than that. So, so from Cressley, I think you'll see somewhere over five-hundred thousand. And, and that will obviously work to help replenish that.
It doesn't call out Cressley, but you always have a, almost like having a Cressley in there. There, there's revenues coming in anyway.
Yes.
And lastly, so, and that has to be used in five years.
Each allocation that we receive.
So, so if we, if we finish up in five years at one-point-seven, one-point-eight million, even with this, we're not going to lose other projects, assuming we have the bandwidth to do other projects. We're not going to be short money where we say, let's do this, but we can't finish the project over at X Park or Y. It actually does impact it. It's going to lower, it's going to lower reserves. We're going to lose something maybe where we had another half a million expiring in twenty-six or twenty-seven.
Yeah, hard, hard to say, be, be, because as, as we project that revenue coming in over five years, we, it's, it's fairly easy for us to project that we're seeing about four-hundred thousand in revenue. What we can't tell you is exactly what, what, you know, what, what part of the city we're going to see it in or where. Because we generally like to use those funds where there is a nexus to the park or recreational amenity that they're being used to improve.
And, and last question, maybe time-wise, Cressley comes in, it's right there, obviously, so.
Yes.
What, what timeframe would we, in the, in their cycle, when would we be receiving those funds?
I think we're, I think we're on schedule to get those ones this fiscal year.
I didn't hear your answer, if you could.
I think Amy is.
Which, you say this fiscal year?
I, I said this fiscal year, but Amy might.
Amy, I'm sorry.
We already received the Cressley funds.
Even better. Okay, so, so I mean, I want to get this done. It's not good to have extra costs.
Correct.
But we have, we have a fund specifically for this, and we have money. It doesn't sound like it's going to cost us other projects.
It's not going to cost, it's not going to jeopardize any of the other projects that we currently show in the Parks five-year CIP. It, it may influence our, 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 our future discussions for how we want to program beyond that. But everything that's shown in there now is not a risk.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, thank you. Thanks for the presentation. Lot of information. So from my understanding of the report, the modifications have already been made to the drawings.
Yes.
Okay.
Because for the restroom, as an example, that wasn't a change to the drawing. It was a change. The other ones, correct.
Plans and specs.
Yes.
So if we go with the option you recommend, we still need to allocate another five-hundred and sixty-some thousand. And if we award to the bidder right now, it's only one-hundred thousand above that, correct?
That is correct.
How much time and staff and energy and consultant costs are we accruing to rebid?
Well, we're not, we're not accruing any additional consultant costs because we've already made the adjustments. So it'd be staff time to, to take us through another bid process.
And what's that average, twenty grand, thirty grand?
Probably less than ten.
But we've already paid the consultant to do the modifications?
Yes.
So that's, is that count now?
There was not, there was not an additional cost for.
They did not charge us for that. Okay. Thank you.
I have similar questions. Councilmember Lopez.
Yeah, I appreciate all the information and the presentation. For, for this presentation tonight, have you looked at the, the NA Center, what surrounding cities are seeing for, for the Delta and bids that they're getting back?
Yes, I think the one, I know that one slide that had all the projects on it had a lot of information, but, but the one project on there that, that was, that was very telling for us was the, was the renovation project out at this, at, at the San Jose Rotary Garden, which actually bid slightly after ours. And they also came in about thirty-five percent over their estimate as well. So it's, you know, in, in the all-inclusive type play lots, there, there are a lot of amenities in a fairly small, in a fairly small area. So I don't know that we can necessarily say that it's any one particular factor, but it does appear that over the last twelve months, there was a change in the bid climate that occurred somewhere over the summer, just like many other things in the economy, and it really hasn't come back down. It has leveled off since the pricing has leveled off, but it hasn't shown a trend downward. I don't think that we should expect to see that.
No. So that was the most recent project, and that was, that was also in the summer?
It was, it was, it was bid. I think it went out to bid, and the bids were received in October.
Okay.
So that would tell me that they probably went out to bid about, about two months before, so probably August, September, it was out to bid.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Bybee?
So I, I had some questions about the Parkland, Parkland funds and usage of those and the balance, which you've, you've answered, but I also wonder, in looking at the two alternatives and rebidding and reducing the scope, it seems to me that that's an awful lot of work. And there, there's uncertainty in rebidding and what the, what the new bids will come in at for a difference of about a hundred thousand dollars in the Parkland funds. And why wouldn't staff recommend that alternative to, to award the bid and increase the use of the Parkland fund so that we get the project the way we want it instead of having to reduce the scope of it?
Well, let me give you the brutally honest answer. We, we discussed that a very long time internally, and, and those were the top. and, and those were the top, the top two options because those both make the most sense. So I think, I think there is certainly an argument to be made to award it as is without making any changes. But I, I think in the, in, in an effort to be judicious with our resources and make an effort to bring the cost down because, you know, I don't take any joy in coming to the council, you know, recommending a 590,000 budget adjustment. And I would take even less asking for 680. So I think we were trying to make an effort to be as, as judicious as we could with our resources. I didn't think that the recommended change with regard to the restroom was asking a, a lot. And that's probably where we get the majority of the savings. I do think that there are some trade offs plus, you know, plus and minuses with regard to the, to the custom play amenities that you saw as opposed to taking something that is a little more off the shelf, so to speak. I don't know that we lose play value. But the reason why we went with those items in the beginning was because this is, this Campbell Park is a unique park. And we wanted to capture a lot of what it reflects in terms of the community, what, what the community desires are, proximity to the creek. And so having the Beaver Lodge and our cus- our semi-custom elements was seen as, as, as a, as a very desirable item, not only to the community that participated, but to the Parks and Rec Commission and even to the council when we got here. So that was, we don't enjoy removing that. But I think in an effort to help bring the cost down, and as Amy said, that, that, you know, there, there is some risk there. I think there, I think you could argue the risk of both ways because we don't know what the bid climate is going to be exactly for subsequent to when we put it back out. But historically, there is kind of a trend that it's better to bid projects in the winter than it is to bid them in the summer. And, you know, if there's any, if there's any give and take there, we could, we could capture that. But certainly we, we are going to give up some of the unique features of the park by, by removing that.
Well, and it seems to me that the use of those funds is restricted. So why wouldn't you want to spend them to enhance a park that's going to be, you know, a, a, an asset to our community and, and something that the community is going to enjoy as, as long as you've got the funds and it's not going to impact future projects. It, it just, I, I'm, I'm struggling with that, those two alternatives.
I, I understand that.
Thank you. I'll offer some comments similar to questions. Thank you for my terminology. I had difficulty with the math. And the short thing is assuming the $100,000. And this may be a legal question. Can you accept the low bid and go with a change order to do two things? One is change the specifications for the, or whatever is necessary for the restrooms, which would save substantive amount of money. And can you change the Beaver Hot Custom to the item that you showed? If you make just those two changes, that would, question mark, come up to what dollar value? 100,000, 150,000, what?
Well, it would not come out to over 100 because our delta is less than that. But I, I would be, I would not be optimistic that once you award a contract to a contractor and ask them to do a change order, that's going to come in with a, with a lower figure than what they've already supplied as their bid.
Even if you allow them to, so I, I'm trying to understand. You said that there's a product out there that is less, that meets the toilet specifications. And you said it was substantively less.
Correct.
So what I'm asking is, is there a way to utilize the existing low bid and modify the scope to allow for the less expensive restroom and the less expensive custom Beaver element?
I don't think so. Because we have to, for us to do that, we have to accept their bid in total.
I understand. That's why I'm asking, I'm asking.
And then we would have to ask them to, to price out a change order for us.
That's not unusual.
It's not, but, but most, but most change orders come in higher rather than lower. I mean, it, it is a potent, I don't know. I mean, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at Amy and I'm gonna look at Darcy for maybe some bailout on this, but I don't know that we could, I don't know how far we would get pursuing that.
I'm, I'm asking the question because I, I'm of a similar position that it seems to me we would be better off moving forward. And if you're going to change the scope, then what can we do now to change the scope and move forward and not delay the project even further? That's, that's, that's an al- alternative that was not evaluated here. And to me, that's the logical one, whether it's to come up with more money and just move forward or modify the scope with the low bidder to move forward. Because the future is totally unknown.
No, I, I, and I appreciate that. So hearing your question and hearing Councilmember Bybee's question, I would think that we might want to focus our efforts on the restroom only because I don't know that, I'm not hearing consensus quite yet that we should change the play element. But maybe it's a simple question of, of restroom because the restroom is essentially the same restroom, just by a different manufacturer.
Yeah, I'm just looking for $100,000.
As are we, bless me.
If I may add?
Please.
Yes, I think, you know, those are definitely some things to consider, but I think it may bring challenges, right? Because this is the bid that we receive from the lowest bidder. And so when we start opening things up like that, it could lead to protests, potential protests. And that's just going to take more time and more effort for us to, to get through. And I guess some of this, maybe it will be something that we need, you know, Darcy to help answer from a legal and bidding perspective as well. But the way I see it is that that the 100,000 that we're looking at, it's really a component of all those different elements. It's not just the restroom and it's not, you know, adding the restroom in the Beaver Lodge play area will not get us the 100,000, right? So we have to remember all that. So it's like that list of five, six items that Dave talked about. Those are part of the minor modifications. And that really does sum up to approximately $100,000. So changing the scope that significantly by modifying the, the, the manufacturer for the restroom with the low bid, I think that may come with some challenges. Just want to put that out there.
Okay. Do you have some thoughts, Darcy?
Well, I think that you're, you either need to accept the bid or change the scope. I don't think you can change the scope inside of the bids without coming up with protest.
Thank you. Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, we will open the public hearing. And do we have anyone wishing to speak on this item? I don't see any raised hands online, anyone in the audience? Seeing none, we will close the public comment and bring it back for discussion. And Councilwoman Landry, would you like to begin the discussion, not the questions?
Yes, I'm keeping you in line here, Liz. I think there's two choices. We wait six months, nine months to rebid or we award the contract that is right now. There's, it's an unknown if we go out to bid. And yes, it looks like it's 100,000, but that's, there's no guarantee on that. And I think it's wasting time and staff energy. We've got a hell of, oh, sorry, I didn't say that. Bopaw, sorry. We have a heck of a lot of work that our staff is doing that we have a $20 million, two $20 million projects that we should be focusing on. And yes, $100,000 is a lot, but it's a gamble of that we're going to really save that when it goes out to bid. So my sense is we award it as is and live and learn. And no longer only sole source. I'm surprised we still are even doing that. We should always spec two named manufacturers and or equal. So either wait or award what we have is my impression.
Thank you. Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I appreciate the due diligence that staff did in trying to find reductions in, in the cost. But I'm, I'm strongly in favor of going with the lowest bid for this. Looking at the potential savings of 100,000, you know, if, if we go back, I'm thinking of that first slide that listed the challenges with the, the current bid climate. And the macroeconomic factors have not changed. And so the one thing that we potentially have in our favor is that typically cyclically, this has been, and the winter has been a better time to bid. But we're seeing all kinds of disruptions. We're still seeing supply chain disruptions, shortages of, of labor. And so I'm concerned that we would actually come back with a higher bid, given that those conditions have not improved. And so that risk for 100,000 to me is, is not worth it. I don't have a high enough level of certainty for that. And I also want to speak up in defense of the Beavers, which I, I feel like someone has to make a stand. But I appreciate staff's work and, but I'm, I'm supportive of going with that option.
You know, there's a live Beaver cam in the creek that they showed the actual Beaver videos.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Bybee, any discussion?
Yeah, I, I agree. I concur. I, I, I think the risk to wait is not worth the $100,000. I like the Beaver. I really don't want to see the project scope reduced to try and achieve that amount of, of, of saving. And as long as we've got the funds and our staff's comfortable with the ability to, to move forward without impacting other projects, I would support the alternative too, which is to award the bid.
I would agree with that. I mean, the worst, I think the worst thing to do would be wait and wait months. It's just going to get worse and worse. And then we're back where Councilmember Lopez says, if it does get worse and worse, then why would we expect the new bid to come in less? And that's, that's the one we're going to kick ourselves if it comes back and it's 200,000 instead of 100,000. So given that we have an option to get to design as we want and we know that the fine cost, I think we just learn a lesson and do it. I like doing it sooner, sooner the better because of other projects on the horizon.
Thank, yes.
I, I also want to thank staff for their due diligence in, in preparing this report and trying to come up with alternatives that are amenable to all. So thank you, staff.
Can, can I add to that? Thank you for that because also for Dave and for Amy of explaining what, what happened and taking us through it, it actually is very helpful. So I appreciate that very much.
And I would agree with those last two comments. I also thought it was very beneficial for staff to present lessons learned and how they were addressing the lessons learned. I think that's, that's a great move, step forward. I think I would ask another question about lesson learned is that unusual as the world is now in terms of bid, make sure that staff looks at the midpoint of construction for a cost. I think those are things that may not have come up in past public work projects or, or play projects. And also another comment was Councilwoman Landry mentioned listing two products are equal is another lesson learned. And also trying to utilize off the shelf items as opposed to custom items is another lesson learned. And the only reason I'm supportive of not keeping the Beaver is I just think it makes a homeless shelter a lot easier. Whereas the other example looked a little less inviting for the homeless. It's only the reason I thought of that. I, I totally like the Beavers do. So I am also supportive of moving forward with the existing low bid and increasing their budget to meet that requirement. And perhaps staff can look at other ways of incidental costs that they can help reduce the delta. But I think the, the risk is too great not to move forward with the bid that we have. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, so if we have the motion here for the recommended action, if we just take out, reject all bids and keep it to say Campbell Park Improvement, approve the plans and specs, is that going to be enough for the motion?
I think it might have to say something like, approve low bid.
Alternative two or something like that. I think that, that would probably do.
Yeah, it would not be to accept plans and specs because we're not redoing, you're not approving the revised plans and specs. You're now recommending award to the low bidder.
Do you have the wording for a motion? I don't have, I can't call up the.
If I can try, can we, can we say award? Move forward with alternative to award as is to lowest bidder?
Yes.
As represented in the report. Is that fair? I'll make that motion if that's. I'm sorry.
Could I just make a comment before we go to a motion? Additionally, in addition to the lessons learned, I, I think it might be prudent to consider increasing the contingency while we're in this climate. I, I think unfortunately, we can probably expect, you know, that, that to continue for a while, given the, the, what you shared of other projects that, that are seeing this as well.
I, I would just say that the contingency is based on the bid amount. So I don't think we need to do the contingency increase, do we?
We're currently showing the contingency at, at 10% of construction, which is, which is typical. So I, I appreciate what Councilmember Lopez is saying and, and, and more flexibility is better. But as the mayor recognizes with the larger bid, the 10% also grows. So I, I think we're, we're, I think we're pretty good with where that's at. And if we run into a problem, we will not so happily come back to council, but we will come back to council. But I think if, if any of you want to turn to page four of the staff report and read that first paragraph under alternative two, that's essentially what the recommended action would, would be, although we accept as stated by the vice mayor.
And, and can I just clarify my comment? It's not in reference to this project, just for future projects in general in this environment.
Basically, you're asking for a bidder's contingency, not a construction contingency.
So actually, the 10% contingency in here is construction contingency.
No, I know, but what Sergio was saying on future projects have a bidder's contingency. So that when they come to council to ask for the funds, that there's a contingency in there for the bids.
And I, I mean, I, it's more about the general principle for me. I appreciate that, you know, the nuance and, and the terminology there. So, so thank you. But just, I think we're likely to continue for future projects to see overruns, unfortunately.
Thank you. With that, Chair would consider a motion?
So let me repeat. I think, I think the motion is for counsel to recommend moving forward with alternative two to award the project as is to the lowest bidder as proposed in alternative two of the staff report.
So we have a motion by Vice Mayor Resnikov and a second by Councilwoman Landry. May we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Council, Vice Mayor Resnikov? Mayor Gibbons?
Aye. Thank you very much. Appreciate the effort by staff on that one. The world has some extra challenges for us. Okay, we have items seven and eight and nine and 10 before us. Would anyone like to take a break? We have all said wearing masks and sitting for two hours. It might be appropriate to take a break. So would anyone like to take a break? Yes? Yes. Yes, so we'll, we'll take, how about, I'm going to say it's a 10 minute break. We will begin promptly at 9:25. Thank you. I'm going to say it's a 10 minute break. We will begin promptly at nine twenty-five. Thank you.
... This data is important because if the updated 2020 population does not deviate more than 10% between the highest district and the lowest district in terms of population, between the 2010 federal census and the 2020 federal census, then we are able to deem the current map presumptively constitutional on the basis of it being population balanced. That conversation, council will still need to make the determination of the California Fair Maps Act that are geographically contiguous. They have undivided neighborhoods, undivided communities of interest, easily identifiable boundaries, and that they be compact districts. Presuming our current map still does that, since that's, we had just adopted this map in 2019. So that's up for conversation with the council. It's most of the feedback we have received has been very simple for the redistricting, which is just not to make big, big changes to the map is most of that, but also included in your staff report is all of the public comment received. So staff is just asking that you take a look at the updated population data based on your last conversation and how you want to move forward. And then the direct staff on the outreach process, we had two to three community workshops planned through December. Excuse me, to begin early December through January with our third legal public hearing scheduled for February 1st and the second legal public hearing scheduled for March 1st. But if council deems that this this map or current map is a presumptively constitutional map and all other things being the same as in 2020, then we can use this current map as our draft map, in which case it simplifies the community outreach process. And we would still move forward with our third and fourth public hearing, but wouldn't be needed necessarily to go forward and draw additional draft maps to consider. So that's what's on in the staff report. That's what's in the conversation that's in front of you this evening and the direction that staff is looking for after the conversation. And I will try to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Questions? I have a question, but I think it would be better asked during discussion. So I'll reserve that if I may. If there are no questions, I will open the public hearing. Do we have any member of the public wishing to speak on this item? I do not see any hands raised and no, no one called in advance. Therefore, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to council for discussion. And see if I can close that down. Go ahead, go ahead. And if you have a discussion, and then I'll ask my question and discussion.
I was waiting to see if anybody else wanted to speak first. I understand the map is constitutionally, how did you word that? You got it. But I I did not agree to the map the first time. And there are changes that I think need to be made. Some around McGlinsey and the park not being in District One. But I, and I do think we should still have meetings, maybe not as many in December. But I do think we should have at least one before February.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you. I strongly agree with the staff recommendation for, for for number reasons. I, we so I I want to start off by just noting that we were obligated legally to work with the census data and census tracts that that we have. So I I think there are some areas in in which we might be limited in terms of what we can do and and adjustments and still be compliant. But moreover, I think far and away, the the biggest concern, my concern, the concern we've heard up here, and it it sounds like from residents as well, is not to make anyone lose lose their vote in in the process or dry areas out. We're well within the 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 10% margin that we're required to meet. And I also think that the districts that have been drawn are you know, contiguous, not gerrymandered, makes sense, all these reasons that that we've been through. So on on balance, not that there might be areas where where we could do tweaks, but thinking about the trade offs between that and the 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 cost and the time and the fact that very clearly, the the common theme I hear from or that I read from the resident feedback is that, you know, it, most people are fine with with the lines or they're they're not aware, they're, they don't feel that it's impacted them. So given those trade offs and 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 the cost, and also just wanting to to be clear for any of the the future races that that we have about what the lines are going to be, I'm in favor of keeping the districts that that we have having gone through the process recently. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Resnikov?
I I agree with that. I think that the the primary two goals are being compliant and not disenfranchising. And we meet those. And when we meet those at a lower cost, we meet those with less burden on staff. We can still reach out to the public and and talk to them. I think in in what Councilwoman Lopez just said about people being comfortable with districts. I think they just kind of learned that they're districts. And now there is some benefit to keeping those districts the way they are. But again, we don't have to do it. And we certainly, by status quo, do not disenfranchise anybody. Hard for me to understand, there's only somebody wants to tweak something. There's five people here. So we always want to do a little bit. But the census is what the census is. And if we can achieve those those big two goals without more involvement of staff and the public and the cost, I agree with that. I don't think it's broken. I think I think, the first time, I think the demographer did a really good job. And the fact that it stands up, the census is, is, is fine with me. That would be my, my recommendation, be stay with the staff report. Agreed with the staff, I should say.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Bybee?
So I, I had a question that if we decide to go with the results the way they are and leave the, the districts, we still have, there's still an opportunity for the public to weigh in and provide a, a map if they so choose. And, and we have that option to consider in both February, February and March, or January and February, or?
Yeah. So if, yes. So by, by using our current map as, as like the current, the draft map we're considering in all of the language for our public hearings, it does not preclude anybody from submitting additional maps. Anybody can submit additional maps and we will help them do so. Should they, should they need help with that? So I don't want to put it out that this kind of stops it all, stops the process. We still have to go through the third public hearing. We start to go through the fourth public hearing. And you may need an additional public hearing in March to find, you know, to adopt your ordinance twice, first and second public, excuse me, first and second readings. So there will still be at least two additional opportunities for the public to weigh in on this map. And we will still do the social media postings and we will still publish the public hearing notices in English and Spanish in all of the places that we've been doing, doing this. The only thing that would change then would be the community workshops. We are at seeking guidance on whether or not you felt that was still necessary. Taking our current map as a draft.
So if the council this evening decides that they, they're in agreement that it is population-based and it meets the requirements of the care, the Fair Mac, Fair Maps Act, is there an expectation then that people will want to submit a map in order to try and change the district, the map? Are we somewhat being misleading or? It, it seems a little confusing to me that if, if, if we as a council approve the, the, the map, the census data, accept the census data and the map, the map as is, that we're encouraging people to maybe submit a map that we're not going to change? Does that, if that, does that make sense?
Makes sense, yes.
I follow your logic.
Well, I, I think what we're asking you tonight is, 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 is the existing map that we have, the map that we're going to put forward for purposes of discussion. It's not a decision. That's going to be the final map. And that leaves open the opportunity for the public. And I think to your point, when we, if we do continue with those workshops and we put the tool on our website, we want to be really clear to the public that the council has put forth this map for purposes of discussion. But yet there's an opportunity for additional comments.
And if I may clarify, what I heard Councilmember Bybee say is that there would be a perception or presumption by the public that the council has pretty much made up its mind. So why should we bother to participate?
Well, and that may be, and it's completely appropriate because the existing maps are presumptively constitutional. And I, I didn't come up with the proper word, but we do want to be careful of how we describe that. So the public understands. The council's provided that direction, but there is still an opportunity. And I guess your direction on the workshops would be, would, would help inform that, that discussion as well.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
First, yeah, I just had a follow-up question to that. And I think the city clerk began to answer this. But if, if that's the case, the process you just described, where, how are these cost savings being realized? Is that entirely just from not, whether or not we have the workshops?
Not entirely. So some of that is going to be consultant costs. Because if, if it's not, because we are presumptively constitutional and balanced in our population, there is a little, an assumption that this process becomes simpler. That you're not going to get a large amount of map submitted, that then they have to go through and analyze based on the laws and, and, and deem them not compliant or compliant and then put forward. So they wouldn't necessarily attend the third and fourth public hearing. We didn't need them to. It's just a lot of less work. So they have a, a, a more cost, a lesser expensive, if, for lack of a better word at the moment, but option that we can choose. So it's simpler. So you save approximately $12,000 by using this presumptively constitutional.
And I, and I think if I can add to that, normally the consultants would be preparing a map on the city's behalf to put forward. This map tonight, if the council moves forward, that saves that work for them to do that and go forward and produce. I think last time they may have produced more than one, but they'd be obligated to at least produce one map that met those requirements.
I, I see. So, and I think that's relevant to the, the discussion we were having here is that a map will be produced, the city's map will be produced regardless of, of what we decide. And I just want to clarify, you said about 12,000. The staff report says savings of 25,000?
Yeah. There are costs in terms of publishing and translation costs when we do the community workshops. There is a cost to the translation and publishing. They're ballpark figures, they're not exact, but it's supplies and staff time. And then it's again, bringing the consultant in to teach how to use their tool. There is a cost to that as well.
Okay. Thank you. That's all. I'll let others have the floor for now.
Vice Mayor?
I, I think I'm asking the same question, but, but even with the meetings, it does say $31,000 to $40,000 savings. And that's, keeping in mind, we would still have public meetings and all that. You're saying it's the other costs of consultants, maps, things like that, that would still be, that would, that makes that up. Is that correct?
Yeah. Baseline project costs from the consultant, as well as the additional translation costs and analyzing. And then, and then coming in, because then they would need to be in-house to do public workshops. And so there is a higher cost.
So I would just say that I, I, I do see the perception of, of that, that Councilor Robbie's talking about. I think we got to address that in the messaging we do. That being said, given the constraints we're under and the goals we want and the work we've done to get to this point, I don't have a problem accepting this. I think ultimately it makes sense to do it this way. I think we got to get our message right, that we're not, you know, we're not usurping anybody's input. But the reality is we have some experience in doing this and having done this and created the five. It makes sense, we believe, if we do, to continue doing it this way. So we just got to be really cognizant of the message that goes out and take the input. But if it's a strong desire for this one, we're doing that based on history and knowledge of getting to this point. I don't think that's bad.
So I'm going to chime in here. I feel very strongly that we should not move forward automatically with the maps that we have. And I'll give you some pointers on why I think that's the case. We have to remember, unlike doing it two years ago, we're not going to do this again for 10 years. I think there's transparency that's important, transparency of government. I think participation, it may or may not happen, but I think the opportunity to participate is extremely important. Given the numbers that are shown in these spreadsheets, the disenfranchisement of people not being able to vote for four years, I don't think it's an, as a realistic possibility. And we can certainly prevent that if we need to. So I don't think that's as much of an issue. I believe there is concern of what council puts forward is going to be self-serving. And that's the last thing we want to do. Also, if we say people can present maps, learning how to use a map tool is a bit of a challenge. And I think having a public hearing, public workshops is an important aspect of having people be able to utilize the maps and submit maps. We chose not to do a commission of independent residents. We chose to do this decision-making at the council level, which to me reinforces the need for transparency. So I would offer, if you take a look at the two tables that were in our report, I think one was table 7A and one was 7B. And you look at where the growth was. And I understand the 10% and the legalese of needing all of this. But I want to mention that we're also going through a general plan and housing update with an expectation of increasing the population in eight years, never mind 10 years, of over 3,300 people or 3,000 people plus. So if you look at the growth in District One, it went from 8,300 up to 8,900, so 600 or so. If you go to District Two, it's over 1,000 growth. If you go to District Three, it's also over 1,000 growth. If you go to District Four, it's what, 500 growth? And if you go to District Five, it's around 400 growth. So the, this shift within the districts is substantive and dealt, and different between 500 and 1,000 is a big difference. But also, and I, I want to be thoughtful about saying this, but districts two and three are the areas that are currently being identified in the general plan and housing element process, process of having growth because they incorporate the transit stations and so forth. So two and three have the potential to have the largest amount of growth. So we could put ourselves in a position of having a significant disparity over the elections between now 2020 and 2030. So I think we should take that into account. I think the growth is in those two areas, districts, is as we thought it would be. We knew we've grown several thousand in population. So I think it's important to recognize that. So I'm supportive of having public meetings, having the workshops, having maps submitted. I think it's the right thing to do. Councilwoman Landry?
Yes, I do agree with you, Liz, especially when you do look at the housing potential of the 3,900, whatever with the 35%. And I do agree with Councilmember Bybee about the presumption of, well, you guys approved the map now. Why bother? And that disenfranchises people. We had what, 24 maps submitted last time? So I would hope we would get some. And also I do not support the map the way it is. I do think there was some gerrymandering of, for instance, along Kurtner. The landscape strip that's four feet wide is in District Two when the rest of the street, and I mean, to me, those little things like that, they don't change a whole lot, but it does seem like there was some fine tuning of the perimeters of districts and especially to incorporate the additional 3,009, whatever the number is.
And if you're reminding me, if I may comment on that, the map we got was not the map we submitted. The map that we got was the result of the registrar of voters putting the information together. So it wasn't what we actually submitted. It was different. So that caused some, some confusion, I think, too.
I know. The map online is the map that was, it's online and says 118. It's the map we approved is the same map.
I, I will stand corrected if needed, but I do not believe it was. Okay. So Councilmember Lopez, then Vice Mayor, and then Councilmember Bybee?
So I, I absolutely agree with the point that Councilman Bybee brought up about the, the presumption of, or making it seem as if we've already made, made a choice. And I, I think whatever decision we make has, has been noted. We have to be really careful about the, how that's framed to the public. But I, I do want to note that it sounds like the public, if, if we go with the staff recommendation, the public would still have a chance to submit maps. I have, there would still be workshops, they, you know. And that in, in either case, that the demographer would put forward a map that is quote unquote, the city's map. But the difference is, do we, you know, are, are they going to charge us tens, you know, couple, tens of thousands to, to do so? But, but that, that's part of the process regardless and was last time. And I also don't understand the argument that choosing this would be political because the, and, and I'm speaking purely in terms of perception. I think if people see individual council members drawing and tweaking lines here and there, that actually is a major consideration for me, that I think doing this doesn't put us in that situation and have the perception of being political. So, so that, that, that is a concern for me. And I'm not casting aspersions on, on anyone, just speaking in terms of perception. I think it's cleaner to, to, to do it this way and say, you know, here's what the process was. We can still have participation and take that in consideration. But, but I don't understand how the, the argument that, that the, doing this would, would be more political. So, and, and I also think that unfortunately, we, there's valid points to be made in considering future growth, but also that this is what the process is for districting. And there is a process to, to address that every 10 years. And, and I, I don't know that part of the process is necessarily to anticipate all, all future growth. I think we'd be following what, what the directions are that we're obligated to.
I'm not sure anybody said it was being political, but okay.
I'm, I'm sorry, just to, and, and just to make sure that, that I'm not casting aspersions on any, one, one of your initial points was that, that there's a perception that politicians are, are picking the, the maps or anything the council puts forward would be political. So I, I was trying to address.
I didn't, I didn't say that. But anyway.
Let me comment if I can, because I have the same comment. I'll, I'll, I'll save you here. The words you use actually were self-serving. And, and I think you call it political. I, I think, I think we're referring to the same thing. And I would agree too. The least self-serving thing is to leave things as they are because none of us benefit. And by the way, three, three people here will, will not be running again. So it's hard to be self-serving if you're not going to be the person that's, that's running. I think actually the way to keep the current ones is least political or least self-serving. I think a good point that Councilmember Lopez just made. I think we have a census and the census are the numbers today. And that's what we deal with. We can speculate where we're going to put people. But look at history. It never goes exactly where everybody thinks it's going to go. I think when you're tweaking like small areas you talked about that don't really matter in the number of people, I don't have a problem with that staying as it is. I, I didn't understand the comment you made about the map not being what we submitted. That one, I, I just, I actually don't even understand.
I, I, I'll ask the city clerk to validate that later. But to my knowledge, it was not the map that we submitted.
The map the council chose that went in is not what we got back.
No, it is because the registrar of voters tweaked it based, because we, we had a, a mapping tool that wasn't as comprehensive as it, as it could have been.
So maybe, I don't know. And also what, what level tweaking? I mean, there's a couple people here and I'm not minimizing it, but.
I, I will, I, I, I will tell you, I have a very clear picture, but I don't have a drawing to show it. That what we got back was not what, what we submitted. And the, and the reason I say that is because I felt like the consultant didn't come back with what we reflected and, or requested. And so I was very sensitive to the fact that the boundaries kept changing. So I, we'll check, we can check.
So my recollection, a consultant did what, did what we wanted based on the 2017's maps. I just, to summarize, and I think I'm agreeing mostly with, with all the points that Councilman Lopez made. We, we had seated council members submitting maps last time. I, four maps, five maps, I think, total. That's where you get the question of, is there some motive or so? And I'm not saying there is. Everybody's allowed to participate, but you remove that when you accept what we've done. I think you honor the census and I think it's, it isn't, it isn't usurping the people. It is, we have a responsibility to make a recommendation here. I think staying with what we have is, is fine. As Councilman Bybee pointed out, we can still get maps in. And I guess we can still consider those. But I, I think strongly we should stay where we're at. And I know, like I say, we'll be compliant. We're, we're apolitical. We're not disenfranchising anybody. We maybe save a little bit of cost, maybe save a little efficiency of staff. I think it's a positive thing to do. So I'll support the recommendation. And if I could just say.
Hold on one sec. Councilmember Bybee?
No, I just want to thank the Vice Mayor for the correction. And Mayor, it wasn't my intention to put words in anyone's mouth, but your recollection was accurate.
Thank you. Vice Mayor, I'm sorry, Councilmember Bybee?
So I'm a little confused about the mapping. I, I just feel that the one map that's in our packet, that's marked 111B is the map that the council approved for the district maps.
I don't think it is.
There, that there may have been, I mean, we, we came to a compromise on that. Not every, I mean, we tweaked it and, and it, and we all agreed, or at, at least the majority of the council agreed that this was our district map. And it was a fair map following the process. There was speculation at that time about the population change. And it, yes, it has changed, but. Um, there was speculation at that time about the population change and it, yes, it has changed, but. Within the legal uh limits that were allowed. So I I I don't see the point in having to. Tweak it to to add a little bit here, a little bit there, because. There's some discrepancy now that it wasn't. Drafted properly. So those are my my comments. And then as far as um the the map that we need to. Approved has to be based on the census data today. And again, speculating what's gonna happen in ten years is. Um, really shouldn't be relevant to this process.
Uh, so I I appreciate the discussion. I'm just bringing up where I see the discussion should touch on these various points. Um, and I'm happy if we can agree or disagree, but I think the discussion is what's important. And let me ask um a question. Um. Without the workshops, um, will the public be able to use? Based on your experience using the map. And the fact that the mapping tool, council may not know that the mapping tool changed. The mapping tool that we contracted with, which was pretty straightforward. Was no longer available. So now we've had to switch. And the mapping tool we now have is a little more complicated. So my question is, will we be able to have public input? Without the workshops?
So the public without the workshops. Um, we will create an additional sidebar on our webpage that talks about how to draw a map. And there's going to be, simple tools is just paper in our current boundaries um with the statistics on each district. And they can fill them in by hand if they choose to. And we will accept any format of map that comes into us. We will put a link with some instructions which have been provided by the consultant for the tool. Um, I will say it takes a a little bit of comfort with technology, right? If if you're really uncomfortable just trying it and clicking a button and drawing a, you know, circle on a map and all of that. I would recommend a paper process. Right? With the tools that we would provide to them. Doesn't preclude anybody from participating. Um, and we certainly will help anybody who contacts us to ask us for help. It's just the. Initial conversation on outreach. Included staff having two to three community workshops. And so knowing now what we know about the map and the population data, the question is, do we feel that's still necessary? We could do one community outreach. It would still, there would be a cost to bring the consultant in to teach the public how to use the tool. Should we feel that that's necessary? But there are ways to participate. And we're still doing public hearing notices. We have done our tables at the um farmers markets. We've done a table at the Oktoberfest. To try to engage with the community as well. And the Community of Interest worksheet sheet is still available on our website. And we do get. Um, responses here and there, which I've always included in the packet. So I do think. The effort is there, um, and we're getting some participation. As a staff, I don't know if it's to the level of interest for two to three community workshops. And so that was the question to council this evening is.
I have a question.
Yes, Councilwoman.
Have we already noticed that the there were gonna be these workshops in December? Have we put out public notice already or listed that on our website?
Um, it's listed on our schedule of events and I put a disclaimer on there that the schedule is always changing. There hasn't been any public um noticing in the traditional senses in the newspaper or special notice on our website. It's just under the. Schedule of events. And so I modify that schedule of events. Um, and then I update it with an updated date based on each conversation.
It's not on the districting page of the website? It's under the calendar page?
No, it's on the districting page. The districting page has a schedule of events. And it listed. The way it is listed currently, it says to be determined, the dates and times.
So I think we should at least have one mapping exercise. That's why I said when I started. Was have the one in, whether it be in December or January and then. Go to the official meetings in February and March. But I think we should have at least one effort. Of having the mapping, just, you know, have someone walk you through how to do it, because even the last time it was complicated.
Very complicated, as I remember. Council uh member Bybee.
So, uh, how many, have we had one community workshop so far?
No, we've only held the informational tables.
Yeah, I'm I'm very open to that that idea. I think that that can make sense. And um, I'm also glad to hear that on the website. The other ways of drawing the maps are because if 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 I recall and I, you know, I wasn't part of the process last time, but. Um, it was my personal, a lot of the feedback that council received was either. Informally drawn or just text-based and really more limited to, you know, here's what I care about for my neighborhood. Versus a lot of people, although I know we we did have um some more comprehensive maps, so. Um, I think emphasizing that there are easier ways to um. The participate in the process um is a positive regardless and just really making that clear to people, but um. I I'd be very open to having a a workshop.
I would be open to having a workshop. I think that reflects my interests of being transparent, encouraging participation. Um, I think that. Anything we do, that's. Um, blatantly public, anything that's really there for the community, I think is a great effort. And I'm fine with one. But I I think it would be a great benefit. So. Does someone want to some, yes?
Can I just clarify what what the the discussion, would that be one workshop with the staff recommendation? Modifying the staff recommendation, is is that what's being discussed?
Uh, wait, we haven't gotten there. I understand. That's a good question.
Okay.
Uh, uh, okay, I I don't have the full agenda because I can't do things to at the same time, but. In the recommended action. It does not list in here about the meeting. So is it that, is it beyond what it says on the agenda of the recommended action?
So, um, let me read the recommended action so that we're all on the same page. It is recommended that the city council review the city's updated population data as reported through the twenty twenty federal census. And provide direction to staff relating to the continued public outreach process. We have expanded that discussion. To include, should we, as a council? Put forward, if I'm correct, should we as a council put forward the existing map? And that's not explicitly in this motion.
It's in the, it's in the text, though. It is within the report.
It's in the report, but it's not in the motion. Yeah. So we want to clarify if that's, and that's what Council um Member Lopez's question is. Is it part of the motion?
Let me suggest something. I I can make this motion and then there's gonna be issues on, are we accepting the map and is there a workshop or two?
Right.
So let me, if if you, if you want, let me put a motion on the table. I think it's gonna be hopefully seconded for discussion. And at least we'll have the parameters down, because we've got to talk about the map, the workshops and number of workshops.
I would agree.
So if, let me, let me try.
So this, so this is three things, uh, yeah, two, okay, I'll go for the two. The public outreach is related.
I'm gonna take it as in the staff report, which I know some are gonna have problems with, but let's discuss it at least and have it on the table. So I'll move that staff, that council recommends finding the current district boundary maps to be population balanced. Um, council declares or support the focus on the current boundary map for the remaining two public hearings. And foregoes the previously scheduled community workshops. That covers the three pieces. And then some may have a difference of whether they support the map. And or support the community workshops. That's really the two issues. So I'll throw that motion out. And hopefully somebody will second at least for discussion.
I'll second for discussion.
So let me.
I'm suggesting we take the current district boundary map. We support the current boundary map in the two remaining public hearings and we forego the workshops.
Okay.
So so now you have really two issues. Do we, do we accept the map? And do we want zero, one, or two workshops?
Okay, I I I think that's a good way to phrase the rest of the discussion. Acceptable discussion, okay. Um, so we have a motion by Vice Mayor Resnikov and a second by Councilmember Bybee for the purposes of discussion at this time. Councilmember.
I think she was first.
Oh, sorry.
Well, I was just gonna say that I support. Item one and item two of that, and I think that we should have one community workshop.
So would you say that's a friendly amendment?
Well, I'm, that's, I opened, we, I seconded it for discussion, so I wanted to, okay, here.
Okay, yeah, okay. Um. Council, uh, Councilwoman Landry?
Yeah, so um, the wording of what you said about accepting the map. I don't agree with. And I think it's that presumption of moving forward. Well, council already says that's the map. Why bother participating? And I do think we need at least one mapping workshop.
So that clarifies where your understanding of the motion is, okay? Um, Councilmember Lopez.
Um. So I'm I'm I would be fine with the motion um as presented. I'm I'm also fine with um having one workshop. Um, as as an amendment, I I do, I wonder whether whether the city manager might have um or um. Other staff uh suggestions on uh the discussion and getting the word choice uh right. Um, I I know you made a comment previously, that's important.
As far as the the messaging.
As far as the presumption and be- because there is uh, that is part of the process is my understanding, but. There there's a balance there in terms of how we word that.
Yeah, and I don't know that I have the magic languages I hear, but I I think the concept is that the council is is put forward the existing, if this is the way we go, that. The the city council has um directed staff uh to put forward the existing boundary maps for purposes of. Uh, the public hearing to be discussed in February. However, the process still recognizes. Uh, and the council is still willing to accept uh maps from the public. Um, if they choose to submit those, the council must consider those at their hearings. In February and March. Something, something like that.
And if I may add, a. Maybe we don't get a map from the public. And so this current map then would be the map then that we would use. For the consultant to to certify that it meets all the legal requirements. And then we would put forward to discuss at our. Third and fourth public hearings. Let's say we don't, if we don't get a map from the public, this is one of them, right? Not to preclude any others, but this is gonna be in. So don't even know if it's necessary for you to put in your motion that you want us to include, or we can just do that and put it forward to you. And you can just. Direct us on the community workshops, if that helps your conversation.
And Vice Mayor.
Yeah, I, so, I mean, I'd be willing to forego the workshops. That being said. If we want to do, there is an advantage to what the city manager just said, because none of, nobody here is looking for drastic changes. When we did this last time, we had, we were open, right? We were open to any possibility. We got twenty-three maps, if I remember right. If we present it like you you said, this is what we're presenting. And people that have a problem are gonna have a problem tweaking. They wanna tweak it. I don't like this, I don't like this piece. That's a lot better situation to be in. Than starting over of, oh no, there shouldn't be these five. It should be all of this. And then we are talking disenfranchising. So, I I know we haven't heard from the mayor yet, but I guess my feeling is, I would forego him. But in deference to Councilmember Bybee, and if you're supportive of the of the proposal to propose this map. I would agree to, if you do a friendly amendment of one. Um, one workshop. Presented similar to what the city manager just said. And then we're gonna, if we wind up with maps, I think there're gonna be iterations of this map. Not all over the board, which is, I don't think any, what any of us want to do anyway. And I don't think would be good for the city. So we haven't heard from the, from the mayor yet, but. But when it gets down to, if you wanna, if you wanna add that in, I would be accepting of the workshop.
I'm protected by the masks, so you can't see my expressions. I'm just giving you a hard time.
I I I sat next to you for three years of planning and seven years of council. I got it.
Oh, well, so much for for anonymity. Any other comments? Um, okay, um. I am supportive of a friendly amendment, if that's, comes forward, to have um. Uh, one public hearing. I think that that's really important. I am not comfortable. Um. Putting forward the existing map, but I'd like to ask a little bit of clarity. By allowing the public to put in their own maps and having the public hearing. The fact that the council has put forward a map. Is fine with me. My question is, is the council recommending? The existing map? That's where I'm struggling.
I I don't, I think you want to be careful i- if I can with um recommending the map be adopted. Because you're gonna have to take testimony at your hearing regarding the California Fairer Voters uh right uh findings, so. Um, we do have to put forward a map. This would be the city sponsor map and and with, uh, and and so. Think you just want to be careful with the language, or we're not deciding this is gonna be map. That's still subject to the public hearings. Uh, this is just the map we're putting forward for purposes of those discussions.
I I I think the wording here actually, if you use the exact wording, is declare support to focus on the current boundary map. So it isn't, I mean, it, if we can remove in the recommendation, it is what we're doing. And even if we we just put one forth without any words. We're supporting it because we're offering it. So that, that may ease the wording a bit to make you feel more comfortable.
Yeah, yeah, I just, I'm I'm a concurrent with uh Councilmembers Bybee's original um question.
Can you read them? Cause I can't pull that up. Can you read that again, the way it's worded, please?
I'll I'll read the uh, I'll read the uh, exactly as I have it. Staff is recommending council find the current district boundary maps to be population balanced. To declare their support to focus on the current boundary map for the remaining two public hearings. And forego the previously scheduled community workshops. I think there's a majority here that would say. To present at one workshop. So that would probably be a change. Declare, so it is, we find the map to be population balanced. And we declare support to focus on the current boundary map for the two public hearings and presumably the one scheduled community workshop.
I can live with that.
It says water, I mean, it's somewhat watered down. It isn't a defined, we've chosen this map.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have to have a map.
Yeah.
That's the map you're bringing in, so we're saying take this one in.
And then go from there.
And I would hope honestly, maps, I really would hope they use it as a basis to say, okay, here's how you change it, not, here's how you reinvent it. Because that's what really took us a a long time to get through the process. Some of them were so opposite. The others, and there were interests in that one, because then there was the. I mean, all different bespoke idea and then lengthy, you know, cut it this way, yeah, this way. We would avoid that problem. So.
Can we change the language to then use the wording as a starting point for the map? Cause I think that would have helped me um to this whole perception of the public, oh, well, they approved the map and. That's the one removing forward. So can there be something in there about that? The starting point.
Oh, the mayor, Vice Mayor, think about that for a moment.
To me, focus on is is kind of watered down. And um, I mean, it just. Here's the map, and we're gonna focus on this one. Now what changes the other? So.
It's not ideal, but I'm okay with focus on.
It's actually written, I mean, I give credit to staff. It's written quite well because it makes the point, but it doesn't, it doesn't come to a conclusion.
Yeah.
It really does. It's actually worded. Better than my initial reading of it. It's not forceful, but it's, but it's, but it's specific.
And uh, the 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 critical point, I think, is that um. We can't put a map forward because we haven't had public input.
So.
So, um. Focus on, I mean.
That's the one word I have a problem with.
Yeah, okay.
I mean, I can reread it, well, I've read it and and just change it to, if if you want me to change the motion, change it to the one workshop and at least. Put it to them, unless that's done by friendly amendment, I don't know how you want to do it.
Yeah, uh, Councilmember Bybee.
So if I may, I'd like to offer a friendly amendment and um. Change the last part of that to uh schedule one community workshop.
I'll accept that.
Okay, so we have a motion by Vice Mayor Resnikov, a second. By Councilmember Bybee with a friendly amendment accepted. Any other questions? May we have a roll call vote, please? Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Reluctantly, an aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons?
Aye.
Okay. Um, thank you once again. Good discussion. Appreciate everybody. Thank you once again. Good discussion. Appreciate everybody feeling comfortable putting their concerns up front. And we will now move to item number eight, the extension of a declaration of local emergency. The recommended action, it is recommended that the city council adopt a resolution extending the October nineteenth, twenty twenty one city council proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency resulting from community spread of COVID nineteen. And City Manager Brian Loventhal, your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I have a little bit of feeling like this is Groundhog Day with this item. And as I kind of reread my report, there is a long history with these. We started these declarations of emergency in March of two thousand twenty. And if I counted the dates right, I think we've extended that declaration eleven times since that point. So we've we've now done this twelve times. So if you if you feel like you've done this before, you have. And when we first started this, the California government code regulates how frequent we have to consider declarations of emergency and that government codes specifies sixty days. We have to reconsider and renew the declaration of emergency so that new findings can be made in that that area. But what has changed during the pandemic? One, the the governor originally suspended temporarily suspended provisions of the Brown Act to allow remote meetings, much in the format that we're doing tonight without us being present, this Zoom function. And we operated in that fashion for for many months, allowing the public to participate on Zoom, allowing council members and and staff members and consultants to participate remotely. And recently, the state legislator approved legislature approved AB three six one that was signed by the governor in September. And that really established a new process that is encapsulated in the government code to allow the cities and jurisdictions and governing bodies to decide when they wanted to meet in person, if if there was an emergency versus being dependent upon the governor's temporary order. And, excuse me, as this council is knows, on October nineteenth, the council did consider the findings required by AB three six one to allow remote meetings and approve those in a resolution declaring an emergency on October nineteenth. The the difference with AB three six one and the traditional way that we declare emergencies is it accelerates that review process. So instead of the normal sixty day review process that we've been operating in under AB three six one to continue to 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 meet those requirements, it would require the governing body to meet every thirty days to renew those findings. Since your last meeting was on October nineteenth, in order to comply with that thirty day requirement, that is why we're we are here before you this evening. On October nineteenth, when the council declared the emergency and made the findings in it under AB three six one, the council was clear. At least to me, that the council wanted to continue to meet in person for the council. But they made the findings to allow the commissions a more gentle transition to live meetings. And and so with that, the council asked for specific information from the commissions, whether they're willing and able to meet in person. The staff report includes that that survey information. And then there's a an attachment in the staff report that includes specific comments on a breakdown by the commissions of number of responses. But needless to say, I think overwhelmingly, at least in my impression, the commissions are willing and able to come back in person based on that survey information, and I don't believe that there will be a quorum issue if we do resume in person. So what is before you tonight is a declaration of emergency without the AB three three six one findings. So if council were to entertain staff's recommendation after tonight, moving forward, all of our boards, commissions, subcommittee, executive sessions would be in person and compliant with the the Brown Act. Now, that does not mean that council members or commissioners could not participate remotely. We would still allow that and accommodate that, but we would have to comply with the Brown Act for purposes of noticing on the agenda that that commissioner or or council member was participating remotely and list their location, the physical location with a seventy two hour notice. And we would also have to allow that location to be opened up to the public, should the public want to participate at that location. So that that would be the difference with what we're operate, how we're operating now. Anecdotally, when I attended the CIC Commission last week and I spoke on this topic, the general impression I got from the commission was real happiness, genuine happiness to try to find a way to get back to in-person services. So that is our recommendation tonight. If you move forward with staff's recommendation with this declaration of emergency, we would go back to resuming consideration of of renewing that in sixty days. This declaration, as presented to you tonight, would be good through January twenty ninth. And also tied to this resolution, as is mentioned in the staff report, are several business accommodation resolutions that are delineated. And I and I think there is a five, five of those resolutions in the staff report resolution. One, two, five, eight, zero, one, two, five, nine, four, one, two, five, nine, five, one, two, six, two, zero, and one, six, one, two, six, two, three. All of those resolutions are tied to the declaration of emergency that you're considering this evening. So long as there's a declaration of emergency in effect, those resolutions would still be effective. The reason that I point that out is because it was business accommodation resolutions. There there may be questions in some of your mind of how they tie to the Parklet discussion that we had in specifically that the Parklet program is is ending on that first week of January. If you were to approve the resolution this evening, all of these other resolutions would continue to be effective until the declaration of emergency terminates, which would be January twenty ninth. The the real reason I'm pointing that out, if it's not obvious to, is the discrepancy in dates with the business accommodations that I mentioned here tied to this resolution ending presumably in January twenty ninth, if the declaration isn't continued at that point. And the Parklet program would be ending January third. To decouple those resolutions from this declaration of emergency was was more complicated than that that I believe is worthwhile, but certainly that's a point for the council to consider if there's any other direction other than staff's recommendation. I wanted to make sure that was clear in the ramifications of your of of the recommendation this evening. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions of the council.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, Brian, you may have said this. But if a commissioner or council member chooses to be remote, they're subject, I know you said, to the traditional Brown Act, but also that means there has to be a quorum present. I don't know if I didn't hear you say that. You may have said it.
I didn't make that specific distinction, but I did say that I didn't anticipate that we would have a quorum issue with the responses.
For us, it's three, and for them, it's it's three to five, depending who they are. But you have to have a quorum present, and then the others can be remote.
Correct.
With with proper notice.
Yes, and I didn't say that specifically, but you are.
Question, this is kind of long. If there is somebody that doesn't feel comfortable sitting up here in a group, but doesn't want to open their home, could they remote Zoom from the deech room, for example, if they wanted to?
We would be glad to accommodate that. We would treat it like any other.
Would they be treated as being a city hall? We have to notice.
No, they would notice that location.
Notice that they were there. Okay. But that's an option for somebody who says, I just don't feel comfortable with seven people up here.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
But just as a clarification, they would still have to allow people in the deech room with them.
Yes.
Yeah, so so just so so I have I have similar questions.
It's not a good solution, but it was.
It's it's a clarification. Councilwoman Landry and.
I'm sorry, Brian, about the Parklets. Does that mean they go till January twenty ninth? You kind of got me a little confused.
I'm sorry, I was trying to be really non-confusing, and I apparently was didn't achieve. So so there's there's a distinguishing in dates. The business accommodation resolutions that are tied to this declaration of emergency are will be extended with this emergency. That's clear. That'll be till January.
So the guy who took over his parking spaces will stay till.
In their parking lot, but the Parklet program using city streets and the traditional Parklet program that we see on on Campbell Avenue is ending the first week of.
That's still ending.
Okay, I'm going to hold my questions to comment. No, no other questions, then we will open the public hearing. Do we have any members of the public in the audience or online? I see no one online with hands raised. Anyone in the audience seeing none? We will close the public hearing and bring it back to council discussion. I might try a couple of points. The city manager, I think it was very important what the city manager said about the regulations that remain in place. And then the date that that he's speaking to is the twenty ninth of January being distinct for the Parklets, which is still January third. I would offer that one of the reasons that it's important to understand that these regulations continue and that January twenty ninth may or may not be the final date is for two things. One is the governor has just extended the state mandated emergency through March of two thousand twenty two. And two is we do want to give and the businesses who have expanded into their parking lots and other private parking lots and other areas a plan, a timeframe from which they have to remove. And I think staff has been really preoccupied with so many other things that to have them focus on that at this point, we're still working on the Parklet future issues. So I'm pleased that it goes through the twenty ninth, and I wouldn't be surprised if we need to allow staff a little more time to find the proper implementation of winding down those other programs. Knock on wood, that's the only reason. Let's see. The other thing we haven't spoken directly to, and the city clerk might have a thought here. We haven't clarified that the council can now, by state law, correct me if I'm wrong, hold hybrid meetings. We can have meetings. So even though we are moving all the meetings back to in person, we are going to be continuing the hybrid format of having Zoom so that the public doesn't have to come in and can continue to to connect with the council via Zoom. I want to make sure that we are clear on are we doing that? Is am I describing the format properly and what changes are we anticipating?
I'll just say that it's it's not a change to the Brown Act in state law that you had referenced. We're going back to the Brown Act, which requires, as Vice Mayor Resnikov mentioned, a quorum to be in the room or noticing appropriately. We're adding the Zoom. Right? State law doesn't require us to do that, but we are adding that as a transparency factor in addition to following the Brown Act rules.
Okay, and you also mentioned something about the videoing and what meetings will or will not be.
Yes, so the plan, we've been working through the plan to bring our board and commissions back. And board and commissions, planning, planning commission, city council won't be treated the same. So they'll be in this room. There will be live streamed. Zoom platform will be available for the public to attend as well as in person. Those meetings will be posted online. From that, they're both treated the same. Then we go down to our board and commissions, and that level will have all of the same and not all in this room. They might have use other rooms, but there'll be everything Zoom and in person, everything that you see not live streamed on YouTube like we do for city council and planning commission. And then we have the subcommittee meetings, which will be treated just like the 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 board and commissions and will be in our deech conference room.
And the Zoom meetings are recorded and they will be available.
So the meetings are going to be recorded for purposes of using the recording for the minutes taken. And they will be available online for city council and planning commission. Boards and commissions will have their minutes posted online once they're complete. And that is our current plan.
So there's no current traditionally there. The the board meetings, other than planning, commission and council, have not been recorded. Okay, so we're going back to that format.
We're not suggesting we we do that. Zoom has the capability, and we'll be using it to create the minutes for the records piece of it, but we're not proposing to post those online.
So, okay, so my my question comment is, we need to be very thoughtful about how we communicate at the introduction and posting of the agendas on what is and isn't going to be available in the format in case people are used to whatever. So I think that would be good. Okay. And if someone misses a meeting, if someone is just not comfortable meeting the requirements of coming into the official meeting, do we need to be aware that if someone misses three meetings, then they are basically, I think we have a three meeting limit now, if someone needs some meeting.
Yeah, we're not proposing to change any of those guidelines. If someone can't meet, we would treat it like any accommodation. And if if the reason is for them missing was because of those accommodations, when we reported that to the council, we would describe.
Okay, so we have we have to be prepared that some of that might occur. Let's see if I got any other notes here. No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. I just have a clarifying question for the city clerk about the plan and process. Have you, is there a plan in place for the the commissions that have more than five people to still do appropriate social distancing?
Depending on their meeting location. So CIC, I believe, and potentially the parks, if I'm not mistaken, might have more than five. And we're planning to have them in this room. And so that we can do the the social distancing across the dais. The others are on smaller. I think they have five members, all of them in the deech conference room or potentially over at the community center. So we have planned for the social distancing based on people's comfort as well as the tech capability in each room.
Okay, I'm I'm a little concerned about the seven member commissions and doing distancing up here. Hard for me to.
They can sit down.
Okay, that's fair.
We'll work through that, too.
Okay. I I think it may not be ideal with it being a perfect symmetry, but I think the plan was we'd spread them out in the space versus having staff, if if we need to commission to use these chairs, staff would be sitting at the side chairs or in the audience.
Got it. Thank you.
And with luck. December twenty eighth is the termination of requirements for social distancing and masks based on the current health department order, which is sixty days after five year olds and up can be vaccinated. So there's a possibility of that going forward that will make everyone's life easier, but we have to keep track of that, particularly given the the recent announcements. Also.
That that did actually raise another question for me. If things, you know, God forbid, take a turn for for the worse, would we be precluded from, you know, properly distancing or could we snap?
The the simple answer is no. You can make those findings at any point. In fact, the rules say that once you've met utilizing AB three six one, you have to meet again within thirty days to make the findings. So I think there could be an argument made, and I I wouldn't suggest this, but we'd come back and have that discussion. You you could certainly make those findings, but I think there could be an argument made that you go ahead and make have your first meeting remotely and then make your findings within thirty days of subsequent to that first meeting. I think is the way the rules read.
Okay, thank you.
You're right. We hope not. Vice Mayor.
Yeah, first, to go back to something you said, keep in mind, December twenty eighth, the removal of masks or social distancing may not alleviate the concerns of people who don't want to commit even with masks. So it may may even be a little worse, maybe, but we'll see what happens. To the city clerk, you may have answered this, and I may have missed it. I was trying to look something else up. I did hear you say that we won't stream any meetings other than planning and council, which traditionally is all we did. The other meetings on Zoom on Zoom, are they will they be captured on Zoom? Will they be captured in here at all? Is there is there is there is there a video that could be archived for later? Used to people? So if you're not broadcasting CIC. Used to people, so if you're not broadcasting CIC, would it be possible to go onto the website? Maybe a week later, pull up an archive or even use your YouTube or so if it's up there, is that, is that a possibility?
It's possibility, we have the capability, Zoom records the meetings. We have not recommended posting those on the website to keep in line with past practice prior to COVID.
Has has anybody looked to see, given that they've all been on YouTube, for example, anybody look to see what viewership they've gotten?
Yes, actually, 19 director and I were just talking about that, they have gone up, the viewership has gone up, it does increase transparency. So we can put those on the website and it doesn't, if council wants us to go in that direction, we can do that. But we were taking the stance of doing things in the pre, pre COVID and we can bring back things that were that had worked for us.
Just suggesting that until the point when we can open up the whole room here and people are comfortable, if there has been a big viewership of CIC, for example, or Parks or HP or anybody, and we see that from the statistics, maybe worthwhile putting them on there. Even if it's not live, so there's a link on the website by three days later or so when the minutes go up or whatever that happens. Or on, to me, YouTube is even easier, much easier than the website.
Yeah, it wouldn't be live streaming, but we could post a video.
Basically a video of the meeting.
Yeah.
So that, just a thought.
So perhaps we could ask staff to come back to us if they can't do that or if it's too costly.
Or if if the statistics show it's not worth it, if four people are watching, that it isn't really worth it. On the other hand, if for some reason people are now interested in some of that, it might even foster some some commissioners in the future.
And that's, that's a very good comment.
Which sometimes drastically, so, okay.
So is there consensus that it would be a good idea to do that? Come to, Councilwoman, Councilwoman Landry.
Well, you just said what I was going to is, I, I don't know that everything's going to go back to pre COVID days. And I think the one thing that I've noticed the most is how much more participation we're getting and the more we can encourage participation, I would want that. And I do think we should be posting these videos of CIC and Parks and Rec and moving forward. You know, it's not going to be pre COVID anymore or, you know, it can't be back the way it used to be.
Vice mayor.
Yeah, I'm sure I would agree with that. I kind of remember, things have changed, right? Remember, you probably remember, certainly Councilman Bobby will go back, oh boy, it's gotta be 10, 12 more years ago. Evan Lowes said here, said we should stream meetings, I think. I wonder what's he talking about? And then all of a sudden, there it is, it's not the easiest thing to find on the website, to me, it's never been. So many people now don't have Comcast, so you don't have access to 26 anymore. But just like that became a standard, frankly, to me, the YouTube ought to be broadcast ought to become standard. There's a YouTube channel, we don't have the meetings. If if it's cost effective and it makes sense to do it, it's such a simple way of accessing from wherever you are.
But I think, I think there are complexities with doing the YouTube. I think the recording from the Zoom is relatively straightforward.
Maybe the answer is archive on the website, I mean, maybe as a start and let's, and we, when we, when we have that, can you see viewership? Can we, can we tell, so, yeah. No, no, but but we would know so many people access the given meeting on the website. It might spur us to say, well, there's an interest in this. So I think people, people that did show up to accept.
We planted using Zoom that will record, so we do have some options there.
It's gonna be a challenge to get people back in, so, yeah.
So that's, yeah, that's, that's, that's err on the side of participation. Okay, Councilmember Lopez.
On this last point, yeah, I couldn't agree more, trying to encourage that and explore those options. I also wanted to make the point that looking at the survey results, which I really appreciate the staff work on this, it's very helpful. I I know it's not a significant amount of people who who had an issue and it's spread out among different commissions and so that helps address the form issue for me. And at the same time, I think there's, even though it's a small number, I think there are people with legitimate concerns. And to the extent that, you know, I'm not presuming which way council is going to go. But if we go back to the the previous Brown Act rules, if we emphasize that there are options, you know, that it, that it doesn't just have to be during their home and have to open up and post a notice on the door and try to work with people, I think that would really help with retention and just with showing them that that we're being cognizant of the fact that, you know, we're still in an uncertain world. And as we try to come back and normalize some things, which I'm all in favor of, we want to be cognizant of some of those concerns.
I was just gonna say, let's take the best of the positives. We sat here and said, wouldn't it be great to be able to take questions phoned in at one time or called in? We know how to do it, but it's a standard now and and there's no reason I should ever stop. But we wondered, you know, how would we identify them, what would you, but here it is, it's been a year and a half and it's, it's kind of a given, so.
Necessity is the mother of all inventions, right?
I think we should look at the positives and keep.
Yeah. Seeing that they have better access.
Yeah, that's true. Councilwoman, did I be any thoughts before we make a motion?
No, I I concur with all that was said.
Okay, so we have a resolution that is required. Is there anyone wishing to make a motion with the resolution and or tweaking the resolution? Councilwoman Landry?
I make a motion that the city council adopt a resolution extending October 19th, 2021, City Council proclamation declaring the existence of a local emergency resulting from community spread of COVID-19.
Thank you, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Councilmember Bybee, a motion by Councilwoman Landry, seconded by Councilmember Bybee. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov? Mayor Gibbons?
Aye. And I would just put a thought that staff will have, will be able to utilize the time basically in January to put together a plan on how to move forward with all the resolutions that remain open and the next steps with those. Thank you. All right, we will now move forward with item number nine. Are we there? We are there. Item number nine has the approved appointments to the Historic Preservation Board, yay. It is the recommended, it is recommended that the city council approve the recommendation of the Advisory Commissioner Appointment Interview Subcommittee regarding appointments to the Historic Preservation Board for two four-year terms expiring in October 2025. And we will have a presentation by?
So I'll do the initial report. Councilwoman, Councilwoman Landry and I met on November 9th to interview the applicants for the Historic Preservation Board. Initially, there were four applicants, one withdrew prior to the interview and we had one no show. So we actually interviewed two applicants, one of them is Michael Folks, who is an incumbent and has requested reappointment. And we have a new applicant, Rob Cordway, who is very interested in serving on the Historic Preservation Board and is looking forward to learning more about historic preservation. We had good, a good interview with each of the of the gentlemen and they were very enthusiastic and looking forward to serving, continuing to serve the city and someone that is new and wants to get involved. So we are recommending the appointment of of both of them. And I'll defer to Councilwoman Landry to add anything that she would like to say.
I'll add, I want to thank Sergio for talking to, with John, I think was his, Rob. He said that you were the one that told him about it, so thank you. He was very good and what I thought was interesting is he remembers the Quonset hut. And I said, I haven't heard that word in a long time, but he did his research, he went on the walking tour. He was very impressive, but I just, you remember the Quonset hut, so, but no, it was very good.
Right, so that's good news, thank you. So, all right, do we?
With that, I'll make, oh.
I don't think we need public comment on this, do we? No, so.
So with that, I'll make a recommendation that we appoint Michael Folks and Rob Cordway to the Historic Preservation Board to four, to, to four-year terms expiring October 2025.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Councilmember Bybee and a second by Councilwoman Landry for the Historic Preservation Board appointments. May we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Bybee?
Aye.
Councilwoman Landry?
Aye.
Councilmember Lopez?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Aye.
Mayor Gibbons?
Aye, thank you. More references, more recommendations, that's great. All right, and the final item of the evening, which we actually do have time for, is council member reports. So we will begin with Councilmember Bybee.
So I just reported on the Advisory Commissioner Interview Committee and I attended the Cities Association meeting last week and the focus of the discussion was on an update on SB 9 as well as Bay Area 2050 updates.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Landry.
Yes, thank you. So as we noted, we, Anne and I hosted the Historic Preservation Board Subcommittee. And I also participated with the mayor in our Economic Development Committee Subcommittee. And we had a great presentation, a lot of statistics and numbers. And thank you, Will, over there for helping out and Brian and our consultant. The one big outtake I had from the slides was they had, here's what we're making from these categories. Here's what's outs, the area of influence and here's all the money we're not making. And there was this big, long multi-million dollar column of this is what we're not getting right now. So we need to be pulling in those extra, what we don't have. And the mayor texted me after and said, then this is true after the meeting is the vitality of businesses and the synergy of businesses in Campbell is very important and that the opportunities to address the voids are needed and how tied in to economic development the general plan really is. And I think that's the big takeaway. And I strongly encourage us to bring in an economic consultant to help us come up with the game plan, come up with our branding and our mission moving forward, having everybody on board and and really to deal with this of uneven, what is, I don't, I'm not saying the word, huh? Leakage.
And I'll just tag on to that, that the Subcommittee is having another meeting with staff where we'll ideally put together a report to share with the council on what the next steps can be. And also, the Subcommittee meeting with the presentation was Zoom recorded and there is a presentation. And if anybody wishes to, it was very, very, very informative. So I would encourage, if you have time, it was about an hour and 15 minutes or so, but less than half an hour or so of the presentation. And I, and I would encourage anyone to view that when you have a moment. Okay, anything else? Okay, and Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, the the main one and which was very exciting, especially this time around, was the VTA Policy Advisory Committee. And the big takeaway for us there is that, so one of the items discussed was Measure B funding. And originally, VTA was considering, was going to be considering the top or staff recommendation would have been the top three programs, but they decided to expand that to other proposals and to take into consideration how far along they were in the process, which made our SB 17 and Hamilton project a very strong contender. And so what that means is that we are receiving an additional 1.4 million from VTA for Measure B on on top of what was previously projected. Some understanding, Director Capurso, is that that, that's going to be reflected in the next CIP that SAF brings back. But definitely very good news, that's a total funding of 3 million with the 600K that the city is is funding. And and then on on top of that, we looked at the next two fiscal year budget cycle. Our project was not included in there because the the funding will be allocated in fiscal year 24 and 25. So still on track, still on schedule, but that was the major takeaway.
Thank you. Exciting stuff, and we did receive a letter. I'm not sure if all council members got a copy of the Measure B letter from Supervisor Semidion? Did everybody get that? Good, because that was follow up with very good information. Vice Mayor Resnikov?
Yeah, I think I covered probably all the, all the boards of mine. We did meet with the Clean Water JPA and the Solid Waste JPA. I think everybody here met, has met Marva Sheehan, who was the executive director of that board and other management company over that board, and she is retired. So she's being replaced by Rob Hilton, who was actually her, she worked for him, he is the president of the company that manages it. So it's a lot of consistency there of Rob stepping in, which is important, 1383, but also because now we enter, we've finished the, the disposal contracts, we now we enter the collection contracts. So it's a, it'll become a very busy time there. Also met with West Valley Sanitation, attended the Veterans Day Ceremony from the Veterans Memorial Foundation. And with my remaining board tomorrow was a savaka meeting, so I have some statistics for that, which is always good. And our TEPA meeting, which is the water treatment plant in San Jose, was postponed from last week to this week. So pretty much over about two week period covers everything I was saying, everything I'm saying. Last time was nothing and now is, everything will be cleared through, so that's it.
That's good, thank you. And I will reference, I constantly post about savaka, so they should put some more posting on Nextdoor and on Facebook. I think that would really help people know.
I don't see, I don't see on Nextdoor, but yeah.
Lost kittens, lost dogs, you know, who can take my dog? And I constantly say, check out savaka.
Yeah, and and what, well, just say the one misnomer, people don't understand, they are no kill shelter.
Yeah.
That, I mean, that's, I think 95%, they're, they're generally at 98% dogs, 99% cats, 97 to 8% wildlife. It averages to 98, they're well above the level and it's impossible to get 100%. So they do quite well in that and they always have a lot of cats. There's a shortage of dogs, there has been, not a shortage of cats, so.
They should, they should make themselves better, no. They, there's a lot of people out there that would like to know about them. Okay, so Association of Bay Area Governments, I spoke to last time, there's a meeting tomorrow night, which will be its usual challenging discussion about upcoming legislation and potential ballot measures and continuation of implementation of the 2050 plan. The Campbell Historical Museum and Annesley House, you heard in the announcements of all the events that they are continuing with. And Cities Associations had, did have a selection committee and as Councilmember Bybee alluded to, the Legislative Committee had a presentation by State Senator Dave Cattesi as well as SB 9 from the Planning Collaborative. Senator Cattesi was open to having a discussion with the governor about either postponing or allowing an extension of the housing elements middles or giving cities time to implement all of the 31-plus new housing laws. So the mayor, Flagor from Los Altos and myself, will work with him to see what we can do to give some flexibility to our cities, at least keep the dialogue open, which is so important. And let's see, you heard about the Economic Development Subcommittee, the Silicon Valley Clean Energy and all my various subcommittees. I'll just read the notes they provided, which is Silicon Valley Clean Energy has now invested over 1.6 billion in long-term renewable energy contracts. 13 long-term renewable contracts for solar plus storage, solar, wind and geothermal sources have been signed to provide communities with clean, affordable electricity. 10 of the 13 projects are new developments, adding to the growth of renewable energies and moving us closer to our goal of a decarbonized electric grid. Approximately 3,200 jobs in aggregate will be created at the peak of the construction of these new clean energy projects. These projects will power 227,000 homes annually or approximately 60% of the annual retail load. from Silicon Valley's Clean Energy thirteen cities. Pairing energy storage with solar allows clean energy to be generated during the day and using peak hour, evening hour and used during peak evening hours. This also increases grid resiliency. Wind generation complements the solar, geothermal strengthens the power mix. Silicon Valley Clean Energy's financial power and stability allows us to have this kind of purchasing power for new renewables and long term agreements. Lots of very positive financial arrangements being made through Silicon Valley Clean Energy that everyone should be very pleased with. And I think I covered that one last time. And then the Santa Clara County Emergency Operations Area Council, I have stepped aside as the alternate and allowed another member of the Cities Association to take that position. Okay, anyone else? Any last minute thoughts? All right. Thank you, everyone. Good meeting, excellent discussions, relevant topics. And we will see you all tomorrow at four thirty. Everybody okay with that? Four thirty. We're having a special study session. Yeah, special study session, executive session at four thirty and then the housing element study at five thirty. Okay, all right. Thank you. Is there anything else? Did I?